I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of November 13, 2019, to order. Can we have everyone in the audience, as well as on the dais, please silence? Your cellphone, please. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Commissioner Garner.
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Song.
Present.
Vice Chair Muzi is excused, and Chair Woods.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we have a staff report on the posting of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, November 7. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you. The next one is a revision to the agenda, and I am suggesting that we move Item 4A, Core Palm Springs Development, to the first item on the agenda. And the reason for that is that we have a quorum for that particular item to be on the agenda. We have one commissioner that needs to leave early, and will lose a quorum. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I'll say it.
Okay. It's been first, it's been second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The agenda is approved. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar, non-public hearing items, and items of general interest within this jurisdiction matter of the commission. Comments on a public hearing may be made at the time of the actual public hearing. Please note the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to comment on any items on the agenda other than a public hearing? Thank you, sir. If you'd like to come forward and state your name.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Brian Burksen with Far West Industries. We're here for Item 3A, but we're requesting, if you would consider, Mr. Chair, that our comments be heard after the staff report of our item, since it's much further down on the...
Certainly, I think we can accommodate that. That would not be a problem. So if you want to hold your comments to then, that would be great.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. So if anyone's here to speak on items in non-public hearing, if you're here for living out or whatnot, you can speak now. Okay? Hearing, no more comments. We'll move forward on the agenda. The first item is living out, and I need to recuse myself for that item, and...
Mr. Chair, before we do that, we need to go through the consent calendar.
Consent, sorry. Let's do the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar? It's been first, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approves unanimously. Okay, next we move to the first item on the agenda, and I will turn the meeting over to Commissioner Donenfeld.
Thank you, Chair Woods. The item that we are discussing is Item 4A under New Business, Core Palm Springs LLC, for the approval of a final development plan for planned development district application 5.1449 PDD 389, a 95-unit, three-story condominium building, and a 4,990 square-foot retail structure located at 1122 East Takwitz Canyon Way, Zone REO, Section 14. Mr. Malacher.
Thank you.
Malacher, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Donenfeld. This is a project that the Planning Commission has reviewed previously back in June of 2019. You made a recommendation of approval for the preliminary planned development district, a track map, a mitigated negative declaration, and a recommendation of approval to the City Council. The City Council followed up that with their meeting on June 5, 2019. They also approved the preliminary planned development plan and voted to approve the project. So as a planned development district, it goes through two reviews. It goes through the preliminary, which is conducted by the Planning Commission and the City Council, and then the final planned development district comes back to the Planning Commission only. So you will have the final action on today's item. So to orient you all again to where the project is, it's at the corner of East Takwitz Canyon Way and Hermosa Drive. On these aerial photographs, you'll see it's the blue dashed area. It's approximately 8.75 acres, and on both sides, there's vacant land, and across the street, there is an office building, and then two hotels to the east. So in today's review of the final PD, you'll look at if the plan before you is what we say substantially conforming to what the preliminary PD was. And what we'll review also is the site plan, access, mass and scale, the architectural details, the landscape, hardscape, and the lighting. So we'll go through each of these briefly, and then follow up with some questions, I'm sure. So the first portion of it is the site plan and access. So the plan that was given to you in your packets is slightly different than the plan that was handed to you today. And the reason being is that the... One of the conditions of approval of public benefit is that they add a bench and a water fountain to the public park at the corner of Takwitz and Hermosa. So the plan that was given to you last week had omitted that, but the plan that's before you today has the park bench and the fountain noted.
Is there a blow-up of that? I can't really tell from that.
There is not a blow-up of where the park bench and where the fountain will be, but there is a blow-up of the design of the park. So in the slide that's before you today, this slide, and then this next slide, the slide that's here is the one that the Planning Commission looked at at preliminary review. And it is substantially in conformance, other than at the very top right-hand corner, the Planning Commission reviewed an area that was called a passive or a general sort of... Let me point it out here. This works, right there. So this area was an open area that was sort of undecided as to what was going to happen there and could be used as an event space. The final PD shows that they've added several pickle courts, pickleball courts, sambarchi courts, and then moved the event space over to this area that's highlighted. So staff is comfortable with saying that the site plan is substantially in conformance with the previous... The preliminary development plan, which only moved these items around, and basically answered a question of the Planning Commission, what was going to happen at that vacant sort of site, and that's now they have active recreational space there. So once again, this is what the Planning Commission preliminary approved and what the final PD looks like now. So moving on, this is the site plan showing access to the property. As you know, the building is three stories and has three wings with a center core. Access from the site comes off of Hermosa, and there's two access points, one that leads into the residential area, and then one that leads into the retail portion of the building, which is also the guest portion, and then a connection in the drop-off circle area to the retail portion. So the Planning Commission and AAC had spent quite a bit of time discussing the circulation, and this reflects what was originally approved as part of the preliminary design. So just to orient everybody, the dog park that we have spent lots of time talking about is down here along Takwitz. This is the retail building, and then the residential portion to the top, at the top. In your packet, there's a series of slides of what the design will look like, a lot of the passive recreational area and active recreational area. This is a slide of the dog park showing the undulating wall that is along Takwitz, the combination of masonry stucco and wrought iron fence, and some of the landscaping that's proposed. This is the front entry that goes into the residential portion with the portico shore, and then the glass facade that goes to the top of the building. There was discussion of the center area, if there was going to be a statue or some kind of water feature, and in this design, it just has landscaping in it. And then, once again, there's some slides of the scale and massing, which we'll get into in a little bit. So moving on and talking about the building design and mass and scale, the heights of the building are slightly different than what the PD reviewed, and I'm going to go over them right now. So the top of the roof is 34 feet, the top of the roof screen at the very top of the building is 38, and the top of the elevator shafts are 43.7. This is slightly taller, the overall height, than what was approved as preliminary. It was 41 feet, 41.7 basically, so it's a little higher in two feet at the elevator shafts, but the rest of the building is all in scale as to the preliminary. So staff is comfortable with saying that the building design is in substantial conformance. Moving on to the retail building, this is the corner pocket public park that is at the corner of Takwitz and Hermosa. You'll see that there is a... The retail building anchors this portion. There's a large signature tree that also anchors, and uniform low plants with walls that define the public space versus the private space. So the retail building is substantially similar to the residential building, meaning that they are using materials that include a core ten steel-like substance, and we'll get into that in a minute, glass glazing for storefront, the same horizontal elements, the same ashlar stone, and then faces that match. If you remember, the Planning Commission and AAC had some comments about the core ten steel, which is the top, the third floor of the building, if they were concerned about if it would bleed or melt onto the white. The applicant has come back with a steel, a core ten steel-like finish that is not exactly core ten, but will look like it, and it is a painted product. And the applicant may want to discuss that if you choose to bring them up. So the guardrails are glass, seamless glass, the front facade is bronze glazing, and then you'll see it's the natural ashlar stone that they're proposing also. And so in the hardscape and landscape and lighting portion of the building, so what they've done is they've divided the site into three sections. This is an overall planting plan, but they have called the back portion where the pickleball courts... I'm sorry, the west side of the building where the large pool is, is called the resort, and there's a series of specific plantings that are there. The area where the pickleball courts are, or the northern portion of the site, is called the retreat, and there's a series of plants, large shade trees, and then multiple citrus plants are also there. And then the retail portion, which is the front facing the street, there's a series of plantings and shade trees that will act as the shading for the parking areas. In your packet, there is a series of exhibits that discusses the parking lot shading, includes the types of amenities that would be included in each of these sections of the site plan, the resort, the retreat, and the retail. So it shows things like park benches, the pathways, and all those amenities with some photographs of the types of designs that we would expect. There's a series of slides showing the feel of the design of the proposed landscaping. And they've also included very detailed plans showing paving, the types of paving that are... will be used throughout the project, including sidewalks and pool decks, decorative gravel, enhanced paving for the motor courts, and then the types of decomposed granites that are proposed. They also included an overall wall and fence and gate program. You'll see that there's gates that are included at the pickleball courts that act as the barriers for either the pools or the active areas. There's gates around the dog park, on the private patios at the front and the back of the first floor, and then a series of walls and fences that will be used. So within the packet, it has specific details of the types of perimeter fencing, whether it's wrought iron, the paint colors, any kind of wall, accent walls with stucco, the dog park enclosure using tubular steel, and then a precision block wall, and then pool enclosure, and then the private patio walls off of the pool area. There are also designs on gates, the types of gates that are proposed for the sporting courts, and then the community gates. The overall complex will be gated. You'll have to have an access to get into the passive and the recreational areas of the site. However, the front portion where the guest parking is and the retail section will be the public area. This exhibit shows the cabanas, the fire pits, the benches, lounge seating throughout the site, and I will note that in this slide, there should be an orange dot right here, which is the public park that was a requirement of the public benefit. And these are some designs of what they're proposing for benches, fire pits, lounge seating, and cabanas. Moving on to site lighting, this exhibit shows the types of lights that will be used throughout the site, which include pools for the street... For the parking lot, bollards for landscape lighting, there is some lighting for the pickleball courts, and then other lighting that is accents. And there are examples of each of these types of lights that they're proposing, and they include colored lights for the palm trees to light up and down, the types of parking lot lighting, which would range between 18 and 25 feet tall, their LED cutoff lights that focus all the light down, some tree floodlights, and other structure lights. Circulation plan showing how vehicles would circulate throughout the site. Remember, parking is located underneath the first floor on the two wings that face the street, and then how pedestrian circulation will maneuver throughout the site. When the Planning Commission looked at the preliminary PD and approved the track map, there was up in the far corner where the pickleball courts were, there was a lot that was carved out. As you can see now, by moving the pickleball courts to that location, that vague... Or that separate lot has been removed. So this will be a three-lot subdivision that will go to the City Council for final review. So once again, this is the overall site plan. There are no findings that the Planning Commission needs to make, other than to state that the project is substantially in conformance with the preliminary approved plan. So Chair... Commissioner Donenfeld, that concludes my report, and the applicant is here, should you so choose to talk to him.
Thank you very much. Would the applicants identify themselves, so we can see where you are? Oh, you're right there. Thank you. Questions for staff or general discussion?
Staff.
Mr. Hirschbein?
Usually, we get with... Was the preliminary... Excuse me. Was the preliminary approval conditioned on any... Were there any conditions on the preliminary approval?
Yes. So in your packet, you have the resolution that the Planning Commission approved.
Okay. Can you point that to me, because I looked for it?
So there's the staff report, then there is the two-page resolution... Well, there's the vicinity map, and then the two-page resolution, and then there's the resolution that's number 6745.
6745 is the preliminary?
Yes.
Oh, so that has the Planning Commission conditions?
Yes.
And where are those?
The... If you keep going back, the conditions of approval would be four or five pages back. You're not approving new conditions, you're reaffirming that...
No, I'm just looking for what we... The conditions we put on it originally. So... Am I in the wrong place?
No, you are. You're in the right place. So starting here.
Am I in the wrong place?
Right document, just need a couple pages back. So starting PLN 1, the ones that you all added are really here at the end. Public benefit is one that you all added.
That's the only one?
That's really the key one that you all added.
And what about the bus shelter?
Yeah. So that's another one of the conditions.
Right. And so was the bus shelter part of this addressed?
Yes. The bus shelter is shown on... See if it's on... So on this plan...
You blow that... Is it possible... Is it possible to blow that up?
I know, I need Jerry to make it.
Because we don't have that, right?
You you have it in your packet, yes.
Oh, I thought we didn't have it, you said.
I know it's hard to read, but there's a note.
Let me just see what page that is.
Glenn, you can highlight it too with your.
It's the third page.
Third page, okay, I'm looking at the third page.
So right in here, where I'm pointing at, right below the retail building, there's a note that says bus shelter. Remember, we overrode the engineering condition of having a turnout.
I I don't see that.
I have it on a plan. It may not be this one, but it's there.
Oh, Bus Shelter 25.
Do you look at that?
Okay, and do we know what that looks like? Because when Commissioner Hudson was talking about it, he had some concern that it matched the vocabulary of the retail building.
That was not, it says, the condition says construct bus shelter with design of structure to be similar to commercial building.
Right.
We don't know what that is at this point, but as the building permit permit conditions or as the building permits are submitted, staff will review that.
Okay, so so you'll make sure, I don't want to come back to us, but you'll make sure that the the vocabulary of the bus shelter matches the vocabulary of the retail building?
Yes.
Okay, and then there was another, can you, I guess I couldn't figure out where the drinking fountain was and the bench was. Can you point that out to me?
It's, as I mentioned earlier, it was not on that plan that's before you. So it's shown as an area somewhere in that park, that pocket park, we'll call it, is where it will be. It's not specifically pointed out at this point.
To the east of the retail building?
Let me get back. Yes, so in this design, it will go in this area right here, which is the public space.
Along with the bench?
Along with the bench.
Okay, and the applicant should be able to tell us that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, Ms. Song?
Glenn, maybe I didn't pick up on the first one, but the 25-foot pole of parking lighting heights, was that part of the first submitter that they were proposing, or was that more defined on this final PDD?
So the the zoning code allows poles up to 25 feet. They're not specifying what the height is at this time, maybe they have it, they can give us an example now, but that is what the maximum height is allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? I have a couple, just a couple questions, and one maybe for the applicant. I think it's terrific that we're doing a an animal facility for not only residents but for the community. There is an outdoor space. What is your plan? Dogs are wonderful animals, but they bark a lot, and their barks can get quite loud and move quite far into space, and I'm wondering, do you have any plan or concern about dogs barking predominantly at night that would affect the residents of the living in the
Commissioner, I'm I'm not a specialist in in.
Nor am I.
Pet pet facilities, but the person who is doing this is, and I know he is he has designed soundproofing that will insulate the noise at night from the pet hotel. That obviously, the park will not be generating noise.
I assume at night the dogs or the animals will not be let out into the open outdoor space at night?
No, no, they'll be they'll be in the in the retail.
And there will be some care taken to make sure that it's insulated properly.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. My other question is, in one of the renderings, I saw those beautiful pad balconies. I didn't see a railing on those balconies, but I assume there is a railing on each balcony.
There are railings and there are glass railings.
That's why, I guess I didn't see it. You can see through it. Those are my questions. Any questions for the applicant, as long as he's here?
Yes.
Ms. Song?
Out on Takwitz, I you have decorative pavers coming up of Hermosa, and we were educated on understanding that off of Hermosa, that's really your main entrance to this facility. But on out on Takwitz, you have a right turn only, but on that driveway, I only see asphalt. Was there ever a a crosswalk or some sort of decorative paper touch on Takwitz, because Takwitz is our main boulevard?
I don't believe so, but I'm going to turn that question over to representative of C2, the landscape architect, Fuliam McWilliam.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Fuliam McWilliam. I'm with C2 Collaborative Landscape Architecture Office. Yeah, in the past, we we didn't really address that area as a pedestrian crosswalk and accent paving. We wanted to keep it more off of Hermosa, partly also because of ADA path of travel requirements, too. So we're trying to accentuate areas that are more ADA path of travel with the accent pavers.
But from an urban design and the look from the design on Takwitz, rather than seeing a 120-foot-long asphalt pavement, don't you want to present the building out on Takwitz with that kind of design sensitivity?
You mean at by adding a band?
At the driveway.
Just at the driveway?
At the apron.
And we can, there's no reason why we wouldn't be able to if.
Okay, and then there's also a pedestrian sidewalk out on the west property. What is that sidewalk? Can you describe the quality of that design? I'm assuming that that would be for all the users of this facility, that if they want to walk downtown, that's the pedestrian.
Just to confirm the area, are we talking about this portion?
Correct.
So that would be for the residents, yes. So as you can see, as you go up slightly, there's a gated entry for the residents, so that is mainly dedicated for residents.
And that's a five-foot sidewalk?
Yeah, four to five, four meets ADA, so.
Okay, so that's the pedestrian way for the guests to go to downtown or any other walking?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Use that route to basically go to the retail area, you know, so they don't have to go all the way through the building. It's just a little shortcut for them.
Yeah, it it just seems a little bit sort of left, unaddressed, because if you see your other sidewalks, especially on this exhibit, around the dog park or even the commercial area, you have a more widened and more, I would say, design or sensitive way of connecting to the major.
Right, so the thought behind it was, since it's just for residents only, we don't want to draw too much attention to the public, and that's why we picked four to five feet as the walkway. The one around the retail is more geared towards the public. That's the reasoning for the width and the the scale of it, if you will.
Okay, the the question is, even though the zoning ordinance allows the 25-foot-tall light poles, did you think about from Takwitz, you know, having those light sources be at 25 feet? I I would have thought that you wanted to keep it low in order to keep the sort of resort-like atmosphere.
Yeah, so, yes, this is also something that we'll have to make sure that photometric studies obviously need to kick into with the electrical engineer and get their confirmation, too. But this was just our conceptual schematic pass for the lighting layout, if you will, because they'll have to come in and do the calculations and studies for lighting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Further questions, comments, comments from the commissioners? Mr. Hirschbein?
Yeah, I'm I'm ready to say that this conforms to the preliminary approval.
Ms. Song?
And I'll make a motion.
Okay, good. You want to make a, do you have any conditions you want to? Well, let's let's make the motion first. Mr. Hirschbein is making the motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Garner? Ms. Song? Is there anything you wish to add by way of a condition?
Not by way of condition.
Okay, you may have a further, any discussion? If not, there's a motion and a second to approve the staff report. The project is approved on a vote of four to zero. Thank you very much, and best of luck. We think it's a terrific project and.
Thank you.
Will enhance our community tremendously.
Get it built.
Before she needs it.
Yeah, it's funny.
Just go on livinghouse.com, you can reserve.
I was going to ask you, just off the record, are you getting a lot of interest already?
Yes.
I would.
That's from the sign.
I would imagine. Are these like reservation? You're not requiring deposits or anything at the current. When do you expect to be underway with the project?
Uh, in a day.
And finish date approximately?
Your own date.
Wonderful, congratulations. Thank you. Now we'll wait for our chairman to come back. I'm sorry about your name, I don't know why I scream.
Yeah, every time.
No. It's been too tight. I'm sorry. I took her out of the car when he was moving.
Okay, okay, okay.
You don't have a thing.
Well, how do you know? You haven't seen her in a long time.
Okay, we'll move on. And the next item is a public hearing, item number 2A, which is Fenton Booth on behalf of Glenwood Management Company, LLC, for a proposed tentative track map, number 37807, for the creation of a one-lot condominium map for a previously approved 17-unit apartment complex located at 2150 North Zangero Road. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. So if you recall, on July 26, 2017, the planning commission approved a major architectural application for the development of this 17-unit apartment complex at 2150 Zangero Road. So that project got underway, and if I can just show you this slide here, this is the slide, it's an area of of the site and its general vicinity. So as you can see, the project's already underway. However, we got a a meeting, we had a call and a meeting with the with the developers and proposed the the creation of a condominium map. So that's the application that is, that's the item that is before you this afternoon. Again, you previously approved this project for a 17-unit, three-structures apartment complex. The applicant stated that due to overall costs overrun, they had no choice at this time but to convert the development into a condominium complex. So they followed what the municipal code required, that is submit a tentative parcel map application that requires a review and a recommendation to the to the city council by the planning commission. That's essentially what's before you today. It does meet all the requirement of the general plan and the zoning, and of course, the development standards in terms of the lot area, the width of the lot and the depth of the lot itself and the density. It is zone R2, so condominium units are allowed there, and the general plan designation is medium-density residential. The density is also consistent with that of the general plan. Again, staff was able to make the required findings for tentative parcel map in support of this application. In addition to that, the on the environmental determination, it does meet all the five findings as established under the guidelines of CEQA. So as a result of that, our staff is recommending that the planning commission make a recommendation of approval to to the city council. This is the map, this is the one lot condo map itself that has been proposed. As I as I mentioned earlier on, there are three main structures that constitute the 17 units. Earlier on, the chair had asked a question about the building specifications of an apartment complex being converted into condominium. That question was posed to the city's building official, and he confirmed that the R2 ratings of apartment complexes is the same as that of condominium, so it is consistent. That will conclude staff report. It is a public hearing. The representative of the applicant, Mr. Sambon is in the audience. If you have any question for staff or for the applicant, we're here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donenfeld.
Edward, when we first approved this, we approved it as a rental, as rental buildings, did we not?
Correct.
Does that not, all we're doing here is approving the track map. Do we need to revise the prior approval as to the nature of the buildings, since they're going from rental to condominium?
No, you do not. In terms of the zoning code, we treat apartments and condominiums both as multifamily uses. And so, again, they are equal in terms of use. There is no need for us to go back.
Was there any discussion, as I recall, there was a, there was some discussion about the fact the commission was in was very pleased with the fact that by making these rental, they would probably become much more affordable housing products for people. It's not low-income housing, but more affordable, at a place where where it was appropriate. It seemed like a really good project. Wasn't that one of our basic discussion points?
Yes, it was very much a discussion point and something that the applicant had indicated when they came through the process. We, too, were hoping that this would be apartments, because it would have been the first apartment complex that we had approved in quite a while. Unfortunately, the applicant has indicated in their justification letter that they intended these to be apartments, but over the staff past several months, as the costs relative to construction have gone up, they are no longer able to make a profit with these units as apartment units. The representative for the applicant may be able to give additional discussion, but that was our understanding. It's that in the construction process, the cost of the project became much more expensive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Okay, so a couple of questions. What is a one-lot condominium? I don't understand that term.
So the one-lot condominium is just creating one lot, as opposed to having individual lots for all those 17 units. It's a condominium map.
Ah, yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For purposes of subdividing for condominium units, it's basically, it's under the Subdivision Map Act, but it's like an airspace subdivision, as opposed to discrete individual land lots that would be separately sold.
Okay, okay, thank you. Does the city have affordable housing goals?
Yes, we do.
And and what are they, specifically as it might pertain to this area of the city or anywhere else, or generally, I guess?
It is a vision and the goal of the city to be able to provide affordable housing where the applicable zoning and general plan allows.
Wait, say that again, I didn't get you.
Okay, so it is the city's vision and the goal to help create or help assist in everywhere possible to provide affordable housing in places where the zoning and general plan designations allow.
And would it allow it in this zone and general plan designated area?
It would, but if you recall, it was not proposed to you as an affordable housing.
No, I'm asking about the goals. I'm not asking about what we approved, I'm asking about the goals in this area.
Yeah, it would be.
Okay, and let me follow that up.
Thank you.
In the housing element of the city's general plan, it does discuss affordable housing, and in particular, it identifies certain specific sites for affordable housing. However, this is not one of the sites that was identified in the housing element.
So would you say that this site is exempt from those goals?
It's not necessarily exempt from those goals, it's not identified in the general plan as an affordable housing site. We would welcome affordable housing wherever any developer proposed it.
If, and these are kind of general questions, but if if the site were in one of the one of those designated areas, would.
Then we would need to make sure that it is affordable housing.
Okay, and when we originally approved this, there was no CUP attached to it, was there?
No, this it was just a major architectural application because it was a by right.
So the high-rise?
By, by right zone.
By right, by right. So, thank you. So, thank you. So when we approved it, I mean, we might have been told that the intent was to do rental housing, but there was no, there's no like CUP or zoning requirement or any other requirement that would tie it to rental housing, was there?
None. None.
Okay.
It wasn't required, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Song.
So this is really interesting because the applicant also explains about the issues that they've been running with dry utilities, with the overhead lines that are existing and the cost of undergrounding.
Correct.
Yes, and also, there's quite a bit of conditions of approval that have been deferred by engineering for improvements on North Palm Canyon.
That was actually done by the council.
Correct, but that was done as if it was, as an apartment project, not as a condominium project?
As had the project at the time.
Right.
Correct.
Right, so the question I have is, now that it's going to be a for-sale project, would those conditions be reconsidered by council?
So I will leave that up to the city engineer and the council, so yeah, they will have that decision.
Okay. Okay. In general, I think we have different type of, I wouldn't say a different type, but there are requirements that each of the departments at the city put together depending on the type of project. And because, pretend this project came in as a for-sale condominium project, these set of requirements and conditions would fully apply. I guess I'm sort of repeating myself. And then the council, again, will look at those conditions and see what would be detrimental or not to this case.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any more questions of staff? Hearing none, the applicant is in the audience. Would you like to speak? If so, you can come to the mic and identify yourself, and you'll have up to 10 minutes to speak to the commission.
Alan Sandborn, Sandborn Architecture Group. I'm just here to answer questions. Pretty much Edward explained what the owners or, you know, what the reason behind it. It seems to me it's purely a financial issue.
Okay, thank you. If you want to just hold tight, I'll see if there's anyone in the, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this project? Not seen anyone in the audience to speak on this project. Are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Donenfeld.
I have a question. Of course, we are, as you can tell, we're concerned about affordable housing. Can you tell me at this time, if it were going to be rental, what the rental price points per month would have been, an estimate only, of course, and what is your estimate as to what the price points are going to be as units for sale?
I don't know. I'm not privy to that information.
It just seems to me that making this change will affect our community, and it would be nice to know what will the condominium prices, what are they likely, what range are they likely to be?
Can I address that for a minute?
Certainly.
You know, we've asked that question of developers before, and I don't want to cast a wide net here and say all developers aren't willing to tell us the truth, but there's no, I mean, it's just a number at this point. There's no, you know, there's nothing on a piece of paper that says the rent has to fall between this and this, or the sale of the condominium unit has to be between this and this. So they're, again, I don't want to cast a wide net, but they're just throwing numbers out at us, and I'm not sure that that's going to help us decide.
But I would imagine if you've made a conscious decision from an economic standpoint to go from rental to condo, you've done some number crunching, and you've looked at what your retail prices are likely to be.
Yes, but I'm not sure they're willing to share that with you.
Well, I, it is, I don't think we've often had a situation where we're going from rental, which is in the community interest, we thought, to sale, which is in the developer's interest but not necessarily in affordable housing interest for the city. It would be nice to just have some sort of a ballpark, if you will.
How big are the units?
I'm not sure.
Aren't you the architect?
No, I'm the engineer.
Oh.
Doing the mapping.
Commissioner Song.
So, Mr., so in the staff report, so there are 17 units. Nine of them have three bedrooms. I think, no, 15 of the units will have two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a kitchen and a den, and two of the units will have three bedrooms, three and one have bathrooms and a kitchen.
Is that square footage?
No, so I do not have the square footage. But I can get you that.
That's okay.
Commissioner Song.
Yeah. I, there's, there are several issues, and I don't know if the applicant could answer, but this is the conundrum, is the project is under construction. We want the project to finish. If this becomes a for-sale and there are requirements on Indian Canyon that are also going to add to the cost and therefore make more complication in not finishing the project, we're going to have an unconstructed project. However, I don't think, you know, respectfully, Mr. Sandborn, it's the civil engineer, but perhaps we need somebody who has that kind of information, and I'm proposing that we should continue this project until we get those answers because I would like for the project to finish. I would like it to be apartments, but if they're not, they could be condominiums. But if other applicants who have had similar projects and we have posed several conditions and they have met them, and on this case, they will not because of this case, then how is this case different than the others? I thought I was clear until my last sentence, but...
And did you have a question, another question of the applicant at this point?
I do, but I don't think it's fair to him.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions of the applicant, why the applicant is here? Okay, thank you very much, and I'll close the public hearing at this point. I think I forgot to open the public hearing, so we opened and closed. Right, no, no, we can open it for discussion. Oh, no, we've already asked. There's no one here. So, discussion? Commissioner Donenfeld.
I would, I'm very sympathetic to what Ms. Song said. That was my thought, too. I think, we're not trying to delay what is the inevitable, if that's the inevitable, but I think since this is a change and we are so sensitive as a city and becoming more sensitive to our need for affordable housing, and we were so interested in this project because it was going to be part of fulfilling that need, it would be, we should have the applicant developer here, someone who can talk to the economics of this project and what went into their thinking about why it would become more economically feasible to go a condo route as opposed to a rental route. And I think with respect to those delays in public infrastructure improvements that were agreed to as part of our rental development, we may want to relook at those when it's a condominium development. I think Ms. Song is saying that as well. So I would agree that we postpone this until we can get the applicant developer here.
Councilmember Burrow, elected gardener.
Wow, thanks. Well, I agree. I was just going to propose that we move it to the next meeting when we can get that information.
Michael, did you have?
I was going to ask staff, in terms of those deferred items, council deferred those, right?
That is correct.
And?
Keep in mind that the city council will also see this tentative map application and may reconsider those deferrals at that point in time.
And as commissioners, can we recommend that to council?
I would have you not do that at this point in time.
No, I know, no, no, I'm saying at the appropriate time.
At the appropriate time, you may do that, but not as a condition of approval.
Right, okay, thank you.
So just to clarify that, Director, it would be a recommendation to the council that could be made?
Correct. It would not be a condition of approval of the map.
Right. Okay, so Commissioner Song.
Okay, so, thank you, Flynn, as usual, clarifying. So I think we have two options, which is decide on this project however we decide and have the city council consider this project as a new project with the conditions that are being posed by the department, or we find more information by tabling it and asking for the developer to come in and answer our questions.
So just my point of view is, I'm not sure tabling it will do much for us, but I do agree completely and wholeheartedly that the conditions that were waived, it would be a recommendation to reinsert those conditions in because it would be very hard for the city to ever get those conditions or get that type of public infrastructure improvement at a future date. So I would be in concurrence either way, either it be a continuance or if we were to make a motion now to add that as a recommendation to the city council.
I would add one more point. I think we were looking, we can't judge this project of thinking that the developer was going to make at their will an affordable rental project. It was always going to be a for-market project. No developer will do that at their own choice. But what we like the fact is that there was a different mechanism of different type of housing. That is, they're not all condominiums, they're not all single-family, but there was more stock of apartment housing. That's what I believe. So we're in this situation in which now the applicant is asking to, for this to be a condominium project, and so I would say as part of the discussion is that we would allow, I would say I would recommend that, but have the council and the departments look at this as a brand-new condominium project.
With a recommendation, then, to put in the infrastructure that's being deferred upfront?
Right, right, or the highlight or asterisk, but I'm sure the city council will do that.
Okay. Commissioner Garner, did you have a comment on that or nothing? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion, then? Maria, are you willing to make a motion?
The motion is to approve the project as presented with a yellow bright highlight for department and city council to look at this project as a condominium project.
So the understanding is with the conditions that we would normally place on any other residential project on that site.
Is there a second? Sorry, I'm on the wrong screen. Has there been a second? I'm sorry.
No second.
Okay, it's been first and second. Any more discussion on the item? Hearing none, we can vote. I'm not sure my screen is pulled up. I'm sorry. You give me just a second here. Okay, hold on.
I can go ahead and interject.
Okay, got it. Okay, the motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. And then the next item on the agenda, item 2B. James Hill on behalf of Laberith Extracts, LLC, for a conditional use permit, a CUP application to operate a 1,600-square-foot cannabis manufacturing facility within an existing industrial building located at 4779 East Ramone Road. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. So the item before you now is a conditional use permit, and the applicant, Laberith Extracts, is requesting that you approve the CUP for a type 6 use to allow the manufacturing of cannabis products at 4779 Ramone Road. So there are a few issues that staff has identified with this project. Number one is that, which is really not an issue, but the applicant is proposing a significant interior renovation to accommodate the use. And the applicant is also proposing to use six-inch CMU as walls within the existing structure of the proposed site. In the, in the plans that you have, there are indications of shipping containers, and I'm going to go through my slides in a minute, but I just want to give you the background of this for a minute. There are some shipping containers in that plan. Staff want to state very clearly that those are not part of this review, and those are not permitted by our codes, so those shipping containers are to be ignored even though they appear on the plan. So again, the request is for a CUP to allow the, to allow the operation of a type 6 cannabis manufacturing facility. And I want to state very clearly upfront that this is just a manufacturing. There's a difference between what staff presented to you a couple of weeks ago and this application. This application does not involve cultivation of any type, so it's simply manufacturing. And the products that, the end products that will be manufactured here will be sold or given to a third party for distribution, so all of those will not be carried out at the site. So having said that, I just want to go over the, some slides that I have here. This is an area view of the site and its surrounding, the vicinity. As you can see there, it is, there are three main structures on that parcel. It is a small parcel that is between the one up north and south of it. That's where, that is the 1,600-square-foot structure that will house the cannabis facility. I also want to go over the restriction zone. So the map you see here is what the council approved recently. So the shaded area shows the area of moratorium. The area up north, where you have that little square, is where the facility is to be located. That area is not affected by the moratorium. This is another, this is just a site plan, and as I mentioned earlier on, there are three structures on that parcel. The one in between, where you're seeing the, right here, that's where the proposed facility will be located. So this is the existing structure that the, with the 1,600-square-foot structure where the concrete block and concrete ceiling will be located. All of it are designed to prevent exfiltration, in other words, to avoid or to prevent odors from escaping from the facility. This plan here is the foundation. That will be the new foundation. And so if you look at it closely, on all the four corners of the structure, there will be six-inch CMU walls, and that's the foundation of that. And I have the legend right next to it describing the type of materials that will be used inside of that structure that I showed you earlier. This is the floor plan. This is just a blow-up of the floor plan of how the spatial, internal spaces are distributed. That is, you have offices, you have where the manufacturing operation will be taking place. And then again, this is just the building elevation. This is how it looks like now, but the reason why I want to show this is that in the plans that you have before you that are difficult to read, you have, there are doors that the applicant is proposing to shut that will no longer be part of the operation. So that's the door, and also the one that is to remain, the smaller one to the right. And again, this drawing here will show you the ceiling on top of, right here. That ceiling will be made up of concrete, and again, that is designed to prevent exfiltration of odors from the facility. And this is another section of the roof plan and the ceiling, how it will look like. And these are just pictures of the existing structure as it stands today. So in the package that staff gave, there were two conditions that are missing that staff will be proposing that should the planning commission make the necessary or the required findings to approve this project, these two conditions are to be added in addition to these project-specific conditions that are in your package. Number one, grants for revocation, which states that had none compliance with any of the conditions of this approval or with any applicable city, county, state, and federal codes, ordinances, resolutions, and/or law shall constitute grants to revoke the conditional use permit. In addition, such violation will also result in enforcement actions, including citations, arrest, and business closure in accordance with the law. Second condition is relative to... Second condition is relative to AAC and City Council review, that the applicant shall be required to submit a minor architectural application for any facade improvements that will be reviewed by the council, and that any signage proposed at the site shall be reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee. So there was a negative declaration that staff is proposing. We did prepare an initial study for this project, and a categorical exempt is being proposed for it according to the guidelines of SEQA. So you may be asking, is this different than the project you saw last week? There are some few differences. So number one, again, the type of operation. This is strictly Type 6. It is restricted to manufacturing. There will be no cultivation. The one you saw last week was Type 6 and Type 7, so they could use volatile solvents. This will not include or will not require volatile solvents. Number two, if you recall, the size and the scope of that project was much larger than this. That was 8,740 square feet. Approximately 80% of that space was for cultivation. In this case, it's only 1,600. It's only for manufacturing. Like I said, it is strictly restricted to manufacturing. There will be no cultivation. Hence, there will be no use of any type of hazardous solvent in this facility. And then again, the building. So the one you saw a couple weeks ago was about 40 years. This was also built in the 90s. But staff is comfortable with the renovation that is being proposed, designed to prevent exfiltration, in other words, the concrete, the blocks, and the ceiling. Staff is comfortable with that. And then the doors. The doors in this facility is not as numerous or as many as the one you saw before. And finally, the odor control improvements that's been made or that's been proposed here are significant, and staff believe that they will be able to prevent odor exfiltration. Another thing, which is the last, is the fact that this site is not as close to sensitive receptors. By that I meant residential use it or schools or parks. This site is far away from any of those sensible or sensitive receptors. It is mostly surrounded by existing cannabis facilities and other industrial uses. As a result, staff is able to make the required findings, and our recommendation is that you adopt the categorical exempt under the guidelines of SEQA and approve the conditional use permit in addition to all those conditions that staff has proposed to you or any other additional conditions that the commission might deem necessary. With that, my staff report is concluded. It is a public hearing. I believe the applicants are in the audience to make a presentation to the commission. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I would also mention that the city's odor consultant is in attendance, as well as our SEQA consultant, and they are available to answer questions that the commission may have.
Great. With that, are there questions of staff? Commissioner Donenfeld.
Edwards, interesting that you make the distinction between 6 and 7. It was my understanding, the reason when we took so much time with recommendations to council was that we, based on expert testimony, we felt that 6, both 6 and 7, because the actual marijuana product is being handled, poses a tremendous risk with respect to odor. So I don't see why, it seemed to me that you were arguing, not arguing, but presenting a case that was less difficult to determine regarding the odor issue because it was 6 as opposed to 7, when in fact I think they're both, they both present a similar problem, do they not?
Let me go ahead and address that as the one who drafted the proposed changes to our ordinance recommending changes based on the manufacturing types. In terms of this proposal, they're proposing Type 6 manufacturing, which is non-volatile manufacturing. Type 7 uses volatile materials in the extraction process. So there is a distinction between Type 6 and Type 7. However, for the purposes of the ordinance that will not become effective until January, we are grouping Type 6 and Type 7 together. However, there is a distinction in terms of the processes that they use and the chemicals that they use. Type 6, again, non-volatile versus Type 7, which is volatile.
Is, as I understand, council has taken our recommendations and they are revising the ordinance. Have we been given any direction from council, or maybe from the City Council or our Leo Council, with respect to how we should treat pending applications that, under the new law, might not be approvable in the areas for which they're being sought?
Yes, council did discuss that at their meeting last week. They have authorized that those applications that are in process that have an administrative permit already issued and have filed their conditional use paperwork may go ahead and proceed through the process. However, there is a caveat to that, that as Planning Commission considers those applications at a conditional use permit public hearing, you all still need to make findings that there will not be impacts to adjacent properties. And so you may consider them on a case-by-case basis, considering the specific aspects of the properties and any potential impacts they may pose on adjacent uses.
So if we are convinced that odor is still a problem in a particular case, we can deny that application?
Yes, that's correct, because you would be making findings that it would pose impacts to adjacent properties and uses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschman.
Again, I apologize because I was not at that study session, I had other commitments. Could you, is, are you using the word volatile? Is it a word of art where you're using? I mean, I know volatile means excitable or something along those lines, but what does it mean specifically when you use that in reference to the analysis?
To have someone who may be more of an expert than me, I'm going to call Jay up, if you wouldn't mind.
Who's Jay? Jay is our odor control expert. And Jay, just say your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Jay Taxis, 15,000 Incorporated. Oh, Type 7 manufacturing includes flammable, volatile liquids.
So the only distinction is one process involves flammable material and one process does not?
Yeah, Type 7, there's different subtleties within the manufacturing process within each type, but Type 7 indicates volatile solvent, meaning hexane, pentane, butane, things of that nature.
But that distinction, sorry to cut you off, I just want to get to the point here. Thank you. So the distinction of it being volatile or non-volatile, 7 versus 6, does not go to its, oh my God, the odor part of it?
I apologize for this answer, but it depends. Type 6 is a catch-all for non-volatile. So you have volatile, which is a very small sliver of manufacturing types, and it may be the dominant type, but it's a specific type. Non-volatile is a catch-all that would include CO2 processing, heat, pressure, physical-
Okay, so you're still not getting my point.
I do understand, I do understand your question. I'm just saying I can't answer it because there's, I can't say that one is going to generate more odors than the other.
That's not what I'm asking you to say.
Oh, okay. What are you asking?
I'm asking you, the issue of the volatility in each of those processes, or both of those processes, does that go to odor or just the flammability?
Flammability, it's all a closed system.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Garner, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So in the odor control plan that we have in front of us, it does say that raw cannabis will be at the facility and it will be processed. So isn't that processing of the raw cannabis what causes the initial odors?
Correct.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
While you're up here, can I just, further on that same question? We had heard during the testimony, we were looking at the ordinance, that growing, especially the flowering season, causes an immense amount of odor. Once the cannabis is, once the flowers are harvested and brought to this facility, you just said that they still have an odor to them?
Correct, correct. The product, the end product will have an odor, yeah.
Okay, and can you just give us an idea, and I believe they have an odor control plan to mitigate that odor?
Correct.
But can you give me an idea, again, I'm not in that industry, of what it's like when you grow it versus what it's like when it's dry as far as the intensity of that odor?
That is entirely subjective, but from my experience, flowering, disabling, the kind of like breaking up the product, tends to cause more release of odors, as does kind of that final rush of flowering. I would kind of equate them as an equal kind of intensity. One is substantially longer, though. Growing season is a matter of weeks. The breaking up of a product is a matter of moments, and doesn't happen constantly. It's a momentary occurrence.
So if I can go just a little further in this, I did notice that there's, the doors that have, that go to the exterior doors, that there are actually airlocks inside of that building that would give a buffer between where the actual cannabis is actually being manufactured and where the exterior door is. However, how is delivery handled? I don't know if you can answer this?
Oh, I don't, I don't know, to be honest.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, question of staff. This is staff time, by the way.
Could you put the slide up where you were reading about the conditions having to do with compliance? Okay, so this says that it has to be in compliance with federal law. Am I not mistaken that federal law outlaws the use of marijuana?
I would defy the city attorney for that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat a question?
Okay. So there's a proposed project-specific condition on the screen right now, and part of that says that unless it's, unless the project is in compliance with federal dot-dot-dot laws, if it's not in compliance with federal laws, it can, the CUP can be revoked. And is it's my understanding that federal law prohibits possession of marijuana? Is that wrong?
No, that's not incorrect. The status of the law on the federal level is a little interesting right now. On the books, yes. It is against federal law.
So given that, could the CUP be revoked under that scenario?
If there's concern on the commission's part, we can certainly amend the condition to remove that one item.
I was just wondering why it was in there, I guess.
I think that's a general condition that we typically put in because most projects are, you know, have to comply with federal, state, local law. Again, we could revise that condition if the commission has some concerns about that.
Thank you.
Can I add a comment to that? Is it okay if I add a comment? I was just, regarding the federal comment, I took that just as a layperson to mean, in general, all laws, including any marijuana laws. Is that not the case?
If I may, I think the commission's concern here is that because on the federal level cannabis is still considered a Schedule I controlled substance, not prescribable under any circumstances, if we put that condition in there, could that cause some sort of a conflict? And that's just kind of the state of the law with cannabis right now, how it is.
Thank you.
So I have a question as well. We have been very diligent about Type 6 and Type 7, particularly because of the odors that they generate. We have heard that a lot of people use carbon filters, but those carbon filters are only as good as the, how often they're changed, how active that carbon is in those filters. So we've been very cautious in approving near-residential, any sort of 6 or 7, Type 6 or 7. Can you tell me, on this particular incident, what type of filtration system? Is it carbon or is it one of the more advanced systems?
Oh, it's carbon filtration. And as far as the advancement for odor filtration, carbon filtration is the top. Carbon or potassium filtration, which are about equal. What we're doing in the, for the new requirements, if I could for a second, is going to be enhancing the dilution ratio of what is discharged to the exterior. But as far as filtration goes, this is the top level of filtration. It's carbon filtration.
And if I understand correctly, all the filtration for this particular facility is internal to the structure?
Yeah, I saw that, and I was happy to see all the air streams were inside the building as well, as opposed to rooftop package units or leaving the building, yeah. Everything looked good.
Thank you, thank you. Are there more questions of staff? Commissioner Song.
Yeah, and one more time, could you tell me how the turpentine oil could be used?
Turpene, turpentine is a completely different substance.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I saw it written there.
Turpene oil, how that could be used, even though the condition says that you're not allowed to use, how would one use it?
I'm sorry, could you ask the question again, to how would a terpene be used?
Yeah, on a Type 6 manufacturing.
A terpene is an odor. That's all it is. It's the molecular name for an odor.
Right, but there's a-
So it's, they do collect terpenes, and those are kind of like the source odor. I'm sorry if I don't understand your question.
In this condition, on Type 6, what the processing is on the manufacturing is that it, this whole application is claiming that there will be a non-volatile process.
Correct.
Okay, so no solvent, no-
No volatile solvent.
No volatile solvent would be used in the extracting processing of, okay. So from our last review and studies, we were told that, maybe I understood this wrong, the terpene oils are the main source of odors.
Correct.
Okay, and so how does this Type 6 manufacturing process goes through in order not to produce the high odor products?
The high odor parts are actually the objective. The terpene oil, which really is just more like a terpene liquid, is the flavor component of whatever the manufactured product is.
Okay, got it.
Oh, thank you. Oh, sorry, okay, thank you. Yeah, you would have to amend turpentine to, well, you'd have to, well, turpentine oil is not being manufactured, but I think what the intent was for terpene oil, but that is the product they make.
In other words, this condition, what it's saying is that the product itself, in order to get this product, you have to go through a volatile process. So this product is not going to be the outcome.
I'd have, just looking at that condition, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't know what exactly they're making inside this manufacturing facility, but in general, the end product of a manufacturing process that may use volatile or non-volatile substances, the end product is THC and other cannabinoids, which includes terpenes.
Oh, I see.
So they're extracting and-
Okay.
Extracting those elements for sale and distribution.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Question of staff. Did the new ordinance require the facade architectural application to go to council?
Correct. The, actually, the existing ordinance requires architectural review at Architectural Advisory Committee and City Council. The new ordinance proposes that for all facades of cannabis facilities, and only requires the signage to go to AAC.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chair, just, on that condition, PLN number 12, that would be amended to say terpene, not turpentine.
Great, noted.
Commissioner Song, we apologize.
Apologize.
We had a typo in the condition.
That was my mistake.
I'm totally confused now because our consultant is saying terpene is going to be produced by the process, and now we're saying we're going to prohibit it. So how can we prohibit it, or I know we could prohibit it, but once we prohibit it, it negates the CUP to produce it?
Just to be clear, it's not produced. They will be extracted. They are already there. They will just be extracted and condensed.
So use is different than extract?
No, the terpenes exist naturally in cannabis, and those will be extracted as a process of the manufacturing process.
Will be extracted. And would you interpret that to mean, and then what would a use versus an extraction be?
I'm just saying the end product of an extraction is the cannabinoids. You're taking all of that away from the plant material. That includes the THC, CBDs, and terpenes.
Listen to my question for a second. What's, what's the difference between extracting some, a terpene oil and using a terpene oil?
Use would be personal use is what I was inferring.
So you're interpreting PLN 12 as if there's no personal use of terpene oil on the site allowed?
I, there, well, there should be no personal use of cannabis on any product.
I'm really confused now.
No, I think, I think this is the case.
You have to strike the whole thing.
I think this is the case, is that this condition was more when it was being infused into product. So what we were concerned is that they were using terpene oil in infusing, and therefore it was causing odor when baking or when-
Correct.
Well, why else would you inf-
So this, this, this condition does not apply.
That's right.
Yeah.
The condition does not apply.
Does not apply, because what we are approving here is that would we allow this building to- to extract terpene oil?
Correct.
That's the manufacturing that we are being.
Which is different than PLN 12.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gardner.
Raw cannabis, is that a wet plant or dry plant that's going to be delivered to this facility?
It depends on their standard operating procedures. There is a process for what's called live rosin, which uses a freshly cut plant that is extracted, and they can use dried product as well. It just depends on what they're using. You can use both.
So that's an applicant question?
Yeah. Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there more questions of staff? Hearing no questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing. And is the applicant present?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If the applicant would come forward, you have up to 10 minutes to talk about your And you may want to filter in some of the questions you've heard asked.
Can we help educate you a little bit here? I'm Bob Hellman, CEO of Labyrinth Extracts, and James Hill, co-CEO of Labyrinth Extracts. We were coming out of our seats to try to explain volatile, non-volatile. The volatility has nothing to do with the odor. That's just the method of extracting the oils that are present in cannabis. Dried plant material emits less odor than wet plant materials, such as what he was talking about. If you ever had fresh flowers, they smell very odorous when they're fresh, kind of go down when they're not, but if, you can still smell them. Our method, we bring them in, we've made it at all realms to make it odor control in there by even putting concrete walls, recirculating air, carbon filters, everything we could possibly do in a small facility, even though we don't emit a lot of odor, you're transferring of the material into the building and processing it for freezing. We freeze it to help control the odor. And then it's processed in these rooms that are completely hermetically sealed. They're done so also for fireproofing. We have sprinklers. We have fire suppression in there, and we have also odor sensors that detect the chemicals and detect the smell if it gets above a certain level. So we control the odor, we control the volatility, and we control the safety of it in such a small little area. Yeah. And so once the material's frozen, it's put into a system that is closed loop. It's never exposed to the environment again, so it's closed loop. Terpenes are actually stripped and taken out of our oil. It's what makes it taste like you would think. When you're making products for consumption, that taste is not desirable. So we literally strip that out and then that's disposed. Again, it's also not exposed to the air or the environment. It's taken and disposed of through a hazard company that picks up all the material anyway. So it's not left on-site in open barrels or anything like that. And it's actually quite small amount for terpenes. They're, they're very condensed and a small amount after a lot of plant material's done, and it's just disposed once a week. I think that covers most of that.
Okay. Anything else you want to add? Because then we'll hear from the public and then you'll have a rebuttal period.
No, we've done everything in our power through engineering, through modern equipment, custom-designed, to have automation and back checks and redundancies so that if there was a failure, whether it be odor control, whether it be fire suppression, we always would have backup for not only smell, but for safety reasons too. Safety and security. And that's another reason why there are concrete walls inside for safety.
Great. Thank you so much. Stay close by.
Sure.
Are there members in the public that would like to speak on this item? If you'd come forward and give your name, sir, and if you just, if the applicant would just take a seat nearby, that'd be great. And you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Kyle Hust Sloan from the Demuth Park area. And although I appreciate the applicant's work at containing the odor and the other materials that'll be handled, I am in a position where to come back again and again and again because these things are in the pipeline. And I realize that we can't do much about that. However, since the city, I think, has pretty much considered the production of the six and seven types of cannabis materials as being more worthy of being placed in a green zone, I think it's a shame to go ahead and permit this, even though the adjoining lot area in Demuth Park is moratorium and this particular block isn't. I would think it makes more sense for the applicant to look ahead to where a new green zone may be established and put all the time and energy into setting up that type of facility out there, rather than, again, placing it within a block or two of residential areas, even though, as I say, I think it's great that they are, have been working to establish a much more controlled system. It's, to my mind, the problem of oversaturation in our area. And there may be more applicants coming down the pipe before the new city ordinance takes place. So please take that into consideration when you're considering what to do with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you a very quick question before you leave?
Yes.
Have, do you live in Demuth Park? Is that where you?
Yes, yes.
And have you personally smelt odors?
I can't say that I have.
Okay.
I'm in kind of the middle of the park area.
Okay.
So not that close to it, but I'm just looking at it from the public perspective.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in this item? Hearing none, I'll ask the applicant to come back up, and you'll have two minutes for a rebuttal. And then stick around, there may be questions.
Okay. No problem. I can appreciate his concern about odor. I mean, I would too if I lived in the area. And we've done everything we could. We followed the rules of the city. We started this process over a year ago. We received our city license for cannabis over a year ago. We received our state full license just under 10 months ago. So we have followed this very difficult, long process to get to this point, and we've done everything probably tenfold over what the city requirements were for. We picked this location because it was of a cannabis location. It was industrial. If you see in the pictures, there's literally not a house, residential or public area within 1,000 feet. We have an airport across the street, so unless, I would think that they would emit more odors than we would. I would suggest that you would look at the science behind it and see that we've done everything that we could do to mitigate this. And moving is just not an option at this point. Nor, I think, can we, because of the state.
Great. Thank you. Are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hirschman.
You mentioned you had a, an instrument that measures odor.
Yes.
We were told there is no such thing.
No, odors for chemicals. I'm actually more concerned about any kind of offshoot odors that might come through from the extraction process. The actual plant itself, because we freeze it and it's in a closed-loop system, emits.
No, I'm not asking about that. I'm asking about this instrument.
Yeah, it's a sensor that smells. It's a sniffer, for lack of a better word. If there's any odor that is above parts per million of anything out of the realm of regular oxygen, it will alert us.
Maybe you should talk to one of our city folks about that.
Sure.
Commissioner Donovan.
With respect to the terpene that you extract, is it always within a self-contained piece of equipment? In other words, you don't extract it and put it in some sort of an open?
No.
It goes, would you explain to me how, once you've extracted it, how it is?
Yes.
Extracted and then saved for?
Absolutely. In our particular process, what we do is very simple. It's like making tea. We dip the cannabis in a very, very cold solvent, and it liquefies the oil. Inside that oil are terpene oils, amongst other cannabinoids. We then distill it, and in distilling, what you do is you heat to different temperatures. And terpenes are probably one of the lightest, they, at like 90 degrees, they will start to boil off. So at 90 degrees, we capture it inside of a vessel with vacuum, and it's sealed in that. And then we dispose of that sealed container, that somebody comes out and picks it up. We don't just dump it outside. That's, they can be valuable because they do offer the taste and the nuances that smoking cannabis people like. But we're not making our oil for that. We're making it for more of a consumption process, and you don't want to taste that in your, lack of a better word, gummy bears, right? So you want it to be free of flavonoids and terpenes. And so we capture those and we rid them. We could sell them, but then you'd have to go through another process, which we're not qualified to do.
So your products are basically THC and CBD? That's what you're?
Correct. Mm-hmm. There's a number of other cannabinoids that are minors that come through, but that's our target, THC, CBD.
Thank you.
Commissioner Song.
Okay. So why is the bathroom detached from the main building?
Oh, size. It's currently there. So there's plumbing already there in the existing building for the bathroom is attached outside, so on the outside corner. So what we wanted to do was upgrade it for ADA. It currently is not, and so we had to put ramps and make it larger, and to do so, we kind of pushed it away from the building to be able to get the, I guess, the angle for the ramps to be.
But the use of the bathroom is for your staff.
True, but you still have to follow.
No, no, no. I, of course. You can't get away with ADA.
Yeah. And we're in a very small building. It's 1,600 feet, 40 feet by 40.
But functional-wise, you're okay with your staff leaving the envelope and then going outside and then going to the restroom?
Yeah, because the area is secured. It's a secured area that, even though it goes outside, it's part of our area, and it is fenced and secure and behind, so out of view of any kind. It's the way the building was built, and that's, we kind of have to go with, that's where the plumbing is. So we have to go where the drains are, or we would have to tear up the existing structure.
Forgive me, but you're going through a whole set of improvements. You're literally building a whole new building inside the shelter.
We did that because of the type of business we're in. But if you look at the size of the building, there really wasn't a place to put it inside. It's currently already attached outside, and as far as we knew with our architect, that that was permissible.
Okay. In the hallway, you have an access panel. What is that access panel for?
It's an access panel for, I would have to refer exactly what you're talking to, but to the best of my recollection, it's access panel for, I don't want to say plumbing, I think it was for electrical. And so they, rather, remember, it's concrete, so we can't just cut out later if we want to access or add additions. So there's conduits that go in through the concrete walls for expansion, change of type of equipment, modifications. You have to be able to get into that, kind of like a circuit breaker panel. You have to open it up to get in to do the electrical.
But I thought the argument was that all your mechanical systems are within the envelope of the conditioned space.
True.
So wouldn't your electrical also be the same case?
You can't, no, because we have to be intrinsically safe. So what that means is we have to, even though we're working with non-volatile materials that won't explode, we still chose to go with intrinsically safe or explosion-proof equipment that would not provide sparks or any chance of generating kind of an open flame. And that is to be intrinsically safe. You can only access that from outside of that particular envelope. It's a law, NFPA, National Fire Protection Association.
Okay. And I wanted other applicants to answer this question, but why this location?
Well, Palm Springs or this particular?
Yeah. I'm sure, I mean, you already answered the fact that, you know, the state allows it.
Well, we picked Palm Springs because of its cannabis-friendly nature. We picked Palm Springs because of, most of the cities that offer that same opportunity for license are not as friendly or may not be as well of a suited city. A lot of them are outlining cities. We picked this particular location because there's limited access to approvable buildings for this particular business type. If you look right now, there's probably three buildings available in all of Palm Springs that allow cannabis. Then that's just the owner. Then we have to get to the planning commission, the cannabis commission here. We have to go through all these steps, and so your funnel gets very, very narrow. So even though Palm Springs is very cannabis-friendly, they limit their area to a very finite area.
And last question is, I know you're doing a, literally a new building within an existing building, but what are the site improvements that you're proposing?
Well, we are only required to have two, oh, you mean outside site improvements? Is that what?
Yeah. Outside of the building, outside of the park.
Well, this is an interesting building, if you look at it. There's three main buildings. This is a highly industrial area. The front of the building, I believe, has a cup already for a dispensary, although it's not in place. We took the back area or in the middle area that had no parking, we're adding parking. We're only required to have two spots. We put three spots plus handicap. And we did that on purpose. Again, the ADA, we're looking for vets to work in our facility, and so many of them have some physical issues. So we built that, that whole site improvement based upon the ability for access for handicap. That's our site improvement. There's not much site for us to improve.
Okay. Is the entire site, including the parking spaces, gated, or is it just around the building?
It's around the building. The parking spaces are not gated. They're out in front. I don't know if the landlord would let us do it because there is a building behind us, very large building. We're kind of squished in between.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gardner.
So what are you actually doing? So are you, are you bringing in wet plants?
No.
Okay. It's going to be dry.
It's always dry.
So it's being processed dry.
Mm-hmm.
And then of the 1,600 square feet, where are you, how many square feet are you using for that actual processing?
Well, if you.
That initial processing when there isn't the majority of the odors.
Okay. If they had, it's a very small area, they could bring up the floor plants. Again, that would be very helpful. Okay. If you look at the bottom left-hand corner, that is our freezer. That is where we store all materials that comes in. You can see it's also concrete. The room right outside of that is, I guess, the pre-processing. We have to, by law, weigh it, barcode it, and report it to the state on a manifest. So that's the area that, when it comes in, we make sure that it complies with those governmental requirements, and it's quarantined inside of the freezer. We then would have somebody go in there, they would pull out these bags, giant teabags, so to speak, come in and go through that door, and that would be the extraction facility area, right up above. So as small of a travel space as possible.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschman.
Why do you need a lobby?
You don't. The lobby was designed to have guests, again, by California state law. If someone were to walk into the building, and they have to have access to the building, the federal government, including the city and the police department, they have to come in, they are not allowed to walk into an active facility.
Active being what?
They have to be in a buffer zone where they sign in.
So couldn't they just come in through the office?
The office is back behind fencing, which you don't see here, is to the right of the building. There's barbed wire fence to, for security reasons.
I don't know. It's just odd to have a lobby in a space that, building that's not being public.
Yeah, I know. Trust me, I didn't want to waste that space.
Okay.
But we have to have a place where people come in that are, that are not, do not have direct access. In order to get into those back rooms, you have to have key cards with ID badges. Those people have to be approved. So you got that? Okay.
A couple of questions if I can, if my commissioners are done asking questions. It seems that you've done everything to contain the odor within the building and then mitigate that odor within the building. The question I have more is about the delivery of product. The question I have more is about the delivery of product, um, in and out of, I assume, trucks and how that's actually going to happen. Um, you explained a little bit, it went into freezers.
Mm-hmm.
But could you, we pull it up, could you just, and how do we contain that odor in that delivery process?
Sure. Typically, when we receive our plant material, we've, uh, we've gone and purchased that plant material off-site. They're put into bins, um, for lack of a better word, closed, uh, garbage cans, but they're not garbage cans, they're secured cans. And, uh, they're put in there, they're delivered off of a truck in through the door. We then take them, we have to weigh them. So the doors are closed before we open them. They're not just, you know, opened out in the open. Um, they, they spend the least amount of time, uh, going from the truck to there, but they're in containers.
Okay, and those containers are airtight, is that?
Yeah, they're, they're closed airtight and they're locked, um, as you can imagine for...
Okay.
...safety purposes.
So just a couple of other things that I wanted just to chat with you about. You know, we're adding a condition of approval on grounds for revocation and the city is going to be imposing like a $10,000 fine for any smell. And, you know, that could also lead to a revocation. You're aware of that.
Sure. Uh, no, but you just alerted me.
Yes, we're very serious about odors.
Absolutely, I understand. And you could see we've taken as much caution as you could physically take.
And the reason we're doing that is the CUP normally runs with the land and if you as an operator, um, violate that CUP, we want to be able to revoke that for this particular area. Um, so just so you're aware, well, that we want a clean operation.
Absolutely.
The other thing we're doing, we, um, our industrial zones need some upgrading and we believe we can do this through the cannabis, um, industry coming in. It's one way to look at it. So you will be looking at some architectural review, I think, which was mentioned earlier, maybe some street trees in the parking lot or something. So you need to be thinking about that as well if this were to be approved tonight. So to give that some thought as well on what you're going to do to make it look more architecturally interesting and make that parking lot a little more friendly to our desert hot sun here as far as that goes.
This is not, uh, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No.
It, it's not accessible, uh, or viewable from the street. It is backed down a private road of that, so that may...
We still get that, we still get that.
Okay.
Um, just wanted to make aware of that. Other than that, I don't have any more questions. Does staff have any more questions? Or, excuse me, does commission have any more questions? Thank you very much. And with that, I'll close the public hearing and I'll open it to commission comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the thousandth time, the exhibit that, uh, shows the, uh, project site application submitted and regulatory permit issued, the green areas that we see are, um, what I call it, that the, the applicant has gone through the two steps, which is one to, uh, get approval from the city and then the second step, which is to get approval from the state. Uh, but nobody with the green except for this has actually come through for CUP?
No, it doesn't indicate which ones have a conditional use permit.
Okay.
But it does show those that have a regular...
Got it, okay.
Commissioner Song, if I could just say, I think that's an important distinction because we didn't have CUPs when we first started out. Um, with this, so the city really didn't have as much of a clawback if somebody wasn't abiding by the rules. The CUP gives us that opportunity, which we did not have, is that correct, Flynn? When we first approved some of the initial ones that are causing us some problems.
So in this, in this, um, industrial zone, uh, just like my colleague pointed out, uh, applicant or item, site number two is the one that the CUP has been processed and site number three, which is this application.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, which one are you referring to?
Can you, can you just actually clarify that Organic Solutions of the Desert is already operating, correct?
That is correct. They were one of the original six permities in the city of Palm Springs.
And so therefore, this application, if it were to be approved, would be the second in this zone.
In that immediate area, we had one other facility that came through earlier, baked Betties, that had a conditional use permit. Um, and then down on, um, further to the south, south of the moratorium area, uh, there was another facility that was approved.
Correct.
And can actually, Veronica, I have a question for, for you, if that's okay. Do, do we know if there's been any issues with Organic Solutions of the Desert as far as complaints? No. Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, Veronica responded no, that there were no complaints for Organic Solutions of the Desert. Okay, now we're amongst, discussion amongst us at this point, um, just to keep us focused on this. Any discussion items?
I, um, we're in sort of a, it, it, it feels difficult because we know we have a new ordinance coming into effect on January 1st, but the law is the law and it seems to me that if this applicant has shown sufficient safeguards with respect to the issues that concern us in the community, uh, it's an approvable application under the law as it exists today. So, uh, I would, I, and I think they have, I think they've done as much as they can possibly do. Uh, this is an evolving technology and things are going to change, but having the CUP handle is very good, I think, as well. But I would support approving this application.
Commissioner Song, did you have a comment?
Um, I would too, but I would strongly ask the architect to relook at the layout and include the restroom. No employee should go outside in, in order to access the restroom.
Make it a condition.
Um, and therefore, I would make that into a condition. Uh, and the second would be that it will have to be enhanced both, um, architecturally and also inside improvements. Uh, we don't want to, uh, just because the condition is there for the benefit of the employees, the veterans, uh, that you want to have a nice work environment to come into work. So that would be my two, uh, conditions.
Any other comments? Hearing no comments, is there a motion that somebody would like to make on this?
Mr. Chair, before anyone makes a motion, I'd also just want to clarify that if the motion is to approve with the conditions of approvals we've been discussing, what's the commission's attitude about removing that reference to federal, a federal law violation in the condition? If the commission's attitude is, let's remove that, we can certainly do that.
So just to reiterate what, what our council just said, is there are two conditions that have been suggested by staff. One would be to potentially remove the federal code part of that and then the condition that was just, um, suggested by Commissioner Song.
As, as a lawyer, but not a lawyer who knows a thing about cannabis law, not to the extent there is much out there to know, it would seem to me, Mr. Priest, that there is no harm in having the federal codes, regulations, statutes in there and you don't know what might likely happen in the future. And of course, in the future, we may well see legalization at the federal level and then we'd want everyone to be complying with it. Now, I guess the law is the law and you could, you don't have to state it to make it, everyone should comply by the law, but I, I really don't have a problem with leaving it in. I mean, I guess we lawyers want to put as much in as we can just to cover the, the unknown, so to speak, but I don't really see a reason for taking it out.
Well, whatever the commission's direction is on that, I just wanted to raise that issue.
Yeah, I was surprised, as you as a lawyer, didn't want to keep it in.
Well, it, it does create sort of an odd issue in the field of cannabis. If it were any other type of business, that condition wouldn't even be an issue. You would comply with any federal law that applies, but here it's a little odd. So has the commission, uh, discussed it earlier, whatever your pleasure is.
When we apply, when we did the Betty application, which I guess was a CUP, did we have the same condition in their resolution of approval?
It wasn't written in the same language that we have in this one proposed.
The federal, it didn't say federal.
It didn't say federal.
Okay, well, I, I stand corrected.
And I would point out...
I don't have a problem.
And I would point out, I mean, if, if the key concern of things like, say, federal environmental laws or something like that, there are largely matching laws on the state level for things like that as well. So compliance with state law would effectively be compliance with federal law on most of those issues.
Well, knowing California, we probably have more laws than the federal government, so, okay, thank you.
Since we're thinking about a motion, I, I, I do think it is really great to hear, and although we are not enforcing it in a way, that the applicant is willing to hire veterans. I think somebody willing to hire a veteran and/or our local people, um, is a plus for our economy here in Palm Springs. Um, and I hope that the, will pay a living wage as well.
I will, I will make a motion to approves with the conditions expressed by Ms. Song and the issue regarding federal compliance being deleted as raised by Mr. Hirschbein, I believe.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could just have Commissioner Song restate the conditions. Number one was relative to incorporating the restroom within the building itself and I missed number two.
Number two has to be about, um, architectural enhancement and site improvement via landscape.
Okay, and that will, and that will be done through the architectural review process at Architectural Advisory Committee and City Council.
Correct.
Okay.
And just a side note, uh, the ramp is very expensive. Having the bathroom inside will save you money.
Okay, is, is there a second to the motion? Okay, it's been first and second. Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's take it to a vote. Thank you. The motion passes three to two. Okay, next up. Congratulations. Thank you. The next one is New Church II LLC for a time extension of entitlements to renovate the existing historic community church and orchetry inn for adaptive reuse and demolish portions of the site for the construction and operation of a hotel with accessory spa, restaurant and meeting space on a 3.1 acre site located at 222 South Keweeah Road. Can we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Chair, we are requesting to continue this item to a date certain of December the 11th and would ask for support of the planning commission in that action.
Okay.
Yes, we do need a motion.
A motion made, is there a second? First and second, I'll vote. It would be, December 11th will come back to us. Thank you very much. The next one is Item 2D, the city of Palm Springs for a change of zone at three locations. One, city-owned property, Zone CU at 19 West Sunny Dunes Road. Number two, city-owned property, Zone CU located at the southwest of the intersection of North Indian Canyon Drive and Stevens Road. And number three, privately-owned properties, Own Zone CU at 342 North Palm Canyon Drive. Can we have a staff report, please?
Chair Woods and planning commissioners, the request before you is a change of zone, as you've indicated, for, uh, three locations. Um, and just to give you a bit of background, back in 2012, the city rezoned, uh, a total of 18 properties that was owned at the time by the city or the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. And the, these properties were rezoned from, uh, different types of zones, C1, R2, uh, and actually we had a CC zone, which was civic center zone, and established the civic uses zone. Um, and that was done under ordinance number 1809, city council ordinance number 1809. Uh, since that time, the city has sold some of these sites and is proposed to sell, is proposing to sell some of these properties and three of the properties that we've identified today, um, would be part of that. So one of them is, has been sold and two of them will be sold to private parties. Um, so in response to that, staff requested the planning commission initiate a change of zone for the three properties. Um, and the planning commission did so on February 27th of this year. Uh, as you will recall, there was a fourth location that was not part of the civic use zoning, um, but that was off of Carriage Lane, north of Vista Chino, and staff is addressing that, um, item with a change, or the zone text amendment, that would be the next item on your agenda. So the three locations, uh, as you see here on the screen, they're all zoned CU. Uh, and I'll go into more detail with, on each of these here. Uh, location one, uh, 190 West Sunny Dunes Road is a .16 acre site, west of South Palm Canyon Drive, on the north side of Sunny Dunes Road. Uh, as I said, existing zoning is CU, civic use, and the proposed zone is C2 to be consistent with the adjacent zoning on all sides and across the street. Um, the general plan designation for this site is mixed use, so the proposed zone would be consistent with that designation. Uh, location two is a, an existing undeveloped parcel located on North Palm Canyon Drive, south of Stevens Road. It's roughly three-quarter acres in size and, uh, currently has a mixed use general plan designation. Uh, so in, as you see on the exhibit on the screen here, the existing zoning, CU, proposed zoning to be C1 along the Palm Canyon Drive frontage with the back portion proposed to be R2, consistent with the north, uh, property to the north and south of that site. Um, and so the general plan designation, uh, the proposed zoning would be consistent with the mixed use general plan designation. Uh, and then finally, the third location, 342 North Palm Canyon Drive, it is the Cork and Bottle Class 1 Historic Site and the current general plan designation is Central Business District and the proposed zoning is also proposed to be CBD, Central Business So as I said, the, the city, the planning commission initiated the zone change back in February of this year. Staff reviewed, uh, and evaluated the proposed, uh, appropriate proposed zone changes, what would be appropriate for the proposed zone changes, evaluated the general plan designations for these sites and evaluated existing zoning around the properties. And, um, we would recommend that the planning commission recommend the council approve the previous zoning designations that were at these sites to be consistent with the surrounding area and consistent with the general plan. So this is a public hearing item. Um, the council would also hold a public hearing if the planning commission recommends approval today. Staff has prepared a resolution for you to consider as a part of an attachment to your staff report, uh, with the findings as outlined and required by Section 9407 of the zoning code. Uh, that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Hirschbein.
Could you go back to the, uh, slide that shows, not that one, that one? So R2, uh, excuse me, C1, so you're proposing to divide the site in, into two different zones? So one area of that site would have one zone and another area of that site would have a different zone? Or would they be overlaid?
Uh, they would be split zones, so yeah, it would be C1 on the front half and R2.
And would C1 allow residential above, I mean, we have some mixed-use buildings on Palm Canyon?
Uh-huh. Yes.
It would, C1 would allow that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions of staff? Hearing no questions of staff, uh, the applicant is obviously the city. They're presenting, is there anyone in the audience here to speak on this item? Okay, I'll open the public hearing and then I'll close the public hearing since there's no one here to speak and then we can talk amongst ourselves. Make a motion, that'd be great. Maria comes forward.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's been first and it's been seconded. And any discussion? Okay, let's all vote. Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item, Item 2E is the city of Palm Springs for a zone text amendment to allow residential uses in professional zones where specifically permitted by the general plan land use element. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chair Woods and planning commissioners, uh, this is a request to amend the zoning ordinance to permit residential uses within the P professional zone. Um, that section is located within Section 92.08 of the zoning code and it currently permits medical offices, executive and professional offices and various commercial uses. Um, there are four general locations within the city that have the professional zoning designation, um, and two of these areas have general plan designations that permit residential. So this request is being brought before you to address that inconsistency because, because the current professional zone does not allow... current Professional Zone does not allow residential. So what we're looking to do is provide an avenue to have residential within the P Zone where the general plan allows it. So here on the screen, you have the areas shown in red throughout the city that have the P Zone, the P Professional Zone designation. Generally, you can see, for reference, the airport on the right side of the map. And so areas that are zoned professional are located south of the airport and west of the airport, along Ramon Road, and off of El Cielo and Talkwoods Canyon Way. And then areas north of the airport, you have the Professional zoning off of Sunrise Way and Vista Chino. And then finally, there's a couple of small areas zoned professional across the street from Desert Regional Hospital. So the two areas where the general plan permits residential, you see here, identified on the screen, the mixed use designation is located across the street from the hospital, just on the west side of Indian Canyon Drive, south of Mel Avenue, north of Tcheva. And then also, the general plan designation, the general plan permits low-density residential north of Vista Chino and east of Sunrise Way. So to give you more context, this is the two parcels that are zoned mixed use that also have the P Professional designation. Areas surrounding this parcel have C1 Zone on Palm Canyon and R2 to the north and south for surrounding zones. And then, as I said, east of Sunrise Way and north of Vista Chino, we have various different land uses. The orange color here on the screen shows you where density is permitted or residential is permitted by the general plan. And these are, where you see the color is where we have the Professional zoning designations. So there's a portion of this overall Professional Zone district area that does permit residential. But I would just say that overall, the other areas that you see here on the map that are not called out for residential have a consistent designation that permits office uses. So the general plan really coincides in those locations with the actual Professional zoning as it is currently today without residential. So what staff is proposing for the text amendment to the zoning code is to allow residential by right, and it would permit single-family dwellings and related accessory dwelling units subject to R1C development standards if designated residential by the general plan. So that would address the area north of Vista Chino and east of Sunrise Way, and also allow mixed use developments where it's designated mixed use by the general plan. So that would address the area to the west of the hospital. We also propose to amend the zoning code to the list of prohibited uses, to modify it to say that residential uses would be prohibited except as otherwise permitted, which would be, as I stated here just a moment ago. And also to allow residential density that, within the Development Standards Section 92.08.03, where it states residential units would be developed consistent with the general plan. So what staff, again, the reason staff is bringing this forward is to eliminate the inconsistencies that we have right now with our zoning and general plan designations, where the general plan calls for residential, either only residential in the case of the low-density residential designation, or when the mixed use designation, where it does permit residential. It also would provide sites for more housing, particularly on vacant and underutilized properties. And the general plan has specific policies to that effect to address this matter. And so that's, again, this request that you have before you would support these measures and policies in the general plan. So I'll conclude with that. Staff has prepared a draft resolution for you to consider, and this is a public hearing. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Newell. I particularly like that you referenced the policies in the general plan in this. Thank you very much for doing that. Are there questions of staff at this point? Commissioner Song.
Real quick, Dave, have there been interest, because these properties are not owned by the city, have there been interest on development such as of the property off of Indian Canyon for the very general plan that we're going to consider changing it to?
No, we haven't spoken with this property owner. We have spoken with one of the owners, one of the property owners that has land within the LDR designation, as they have expressed interest to develop the property. And when we have this inconsistency between the general plan, which says residential only, versus the zoning, which says you can only do an office, you know, staff has its hands tied. So really, that's another reason why we're bringing this forward now, is to provide an avenue to have residential and have a project on the property where none currently could be permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any more questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that's here to speak on this item. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We don't need a rebuttal. I will just go back into discussion amongst ourselves, unless there's a motion. Okay, it's been first and seconded. Can we vote? Okay, motion passes. And we'd like to take an eight-minute break. If we can reconvene here at 3:45, it would be perfect. Thank you. Okay, we're under unfinished business. Item 3A, which is far west industry for the final development plan and a revised tentative track map to construct a lawn, a residential project consisting of 56 single-family residences, 25 multifamily residential condominiums, and related on-off-site improvements on a 12.38 acre site located at 777 South Palm Canyon Drive. So that was the Plan 3. And so the applicant had proposed a plan that would mix a Plan 3 in the project site along that buffer, or along that edge. And so the commission made it known that they were opposed to that project. So I'll just go through how the applicant has responded to each of these. The first here, they were to provide visual simulations depicting the proposed changes. And so they've given you a visual simulation of the project as proposed today on the top here, View 1A. And then View 1B shows the simulation of the project if it were to be built as approved under the preliminary development plan without the proposed grade elevation changes. They also provided some additional simulations as requested. There is another simulation provided, looking to the northeast off of Bolardo Road, showing, you see on the left side of the screen, that vantage point. The second request was standing within the rear yard of a home for one of the homes that abut Bolardo, with the two scenarios, the approved development plan, the proposed final development plan being on the top, and the approved on the bottom, in the middle of the screen. And then last, or again, they provided us another rendering showing if it were to be some sort of wrought iron or some sort of metal fence along Bolardo, what you see here on the screen on the right side. Again, the approved is on the bottom, and then the proposed is on the top. So View 2C is the proposed, and View 2D is what would, a simulation of what it would look like if built per...
David, I'm confused. What's the difference between 2A and 2B, and then 2C and 2D?
2A is...
2A is if, so that everything on the top of the screen is what's proposed as a part of the final development plan. And the three images on the bottom of the screen are if it were to be built per the preliminary development plan grades.
And A and C, 2A and 2C are where?
2A or, so 2A, 2B would be standing at the, standing in the rear yard of a home built along Bolardo Road, looking west.
What about C and D?
C and D, same place, except they're showing per one of the comments of a commissioner that what it would look like if it was a wrought iron fence as opposed to a block wall. Because there was a comment about having views through the site with a fence instead of the wall. And then lastly, the third vantage point that was requested was standing in the middle of the site, looking at what you would see, let's say, from the back of, you know, a house to the other back of another house. So that's what you see in this visual simulation. That was the third request. And so that would address item number one. Item number two, consider the previous wall design that allowed views through the perimeter of the site on the west side was, west side of the project was identified specifically. So what they have shown here are the various breeze block designs that are being proposed within the project. The applicant has spoken with me before the meeting today and has indicated a willingness to allow some other alternative. So, and would be happy to work with staff for a wrought iron fence or other materials if the commission, if that was the commission's pleasure. And Mr. Hirschman, you have a question?
They would allow it? I understand the terminology there.
No, they're willing to work with staff to find an alternative design other than a breeze block or a solid wall.
Okay. And the renderings that were done have what was originally approved for fencing and not what they're proposing, is that correct?
The renderings show...
The ones you've already shown?
Yeah, the renderings show...
That's, that's not what they're proposing, is it?
They're, they, no, that's not what they're proposing. It's just an example of what it would look like if it were, if you could see through it. So item number three, the northerly buffer was to be consistent with the previous approval. And so that was specifically related to the setback along the Tocwitz Creek. So the approved preliminary development plan, you see, this is just one excerpt of the landscape plan where a couple of lots back up to the Tocwitz Creek. And looking at one location specifically, there was a 12-foot common lot buffer between the rear property line of the homes and the perimeter property line of the project. So what you had seen in the final development plan on September 25th was a reduction of that dimension down to five feet. And so that was brought into question at that meeting and staff brought that to the applicant's attention. And so they made some changes to the final development plan that you saw on September 25th. And the new buffer common lot, I guess for lack of a better term, is it has a range from 9.8 feet to 12 feet. So while it's not 12 feet overall, it also doesn't have the courtyards that extend into that common lot which you saw on the previous exhibit. The previous slide or this exhibit here shows the approved preliminary development plan. And you see there have courtyard walls that actually extended over into that common lot property. So they've pushed those, or they've pulled those walls back and they're now only within the property of the individual lots. And with the setback in total, you're close to 17 feet for some of these homes. And so...
What do those bump outs represent?
Those would be like a courtyard wall for the back patio of that house.
And if it didn't have that, and how far is that wall from the house?
Five feet.
Five feet from the house. And, and is the wall solid?
Yes. I believe so. Or it would be a breeze block. I'd let the applicant confirm that.
Okay.
Fourth item was that they were to add pedestrian gates to the back of the homes that would abut the creek. And so you see circled in red here along each of the rear walls, courtyard walls at the back of the homes, little pedestrian gates that would provide access to the, to the creek and to the trail along the edge of the site. So that has been incorporated into the final development plan design. And as I said, lastly, they have gone back to only having Plan 1 and Plan 2 along the northerly boundary of the site. So when you look at the plot plan and the unit mix that is being proposed, Plan 1 and Plan 2 are the lighter shades of tan on the overall site plan. And so they only have the Plan 1s and Plan 2s along the edges on the north and west side of the project. The darker tan is only within the, within the interior of the project. And just to kind of go back and revisit what that means is the Plan 2, as you see on this screen, has the second-story element closer towards the front elevation or the front of the home. Whereas the Plan 3 has the bulk of the seconds, or has the second-story pop-up at the back of the home. So that wouldn't add bulk to the edges of the site. So that plan is no longer, or the plan that you saw is being proposed at the last, or on September 25th is no longer being proposed. So they have gone back to incorporating only one and two-story with the two-story bulk being towards the front of the, of the home or the interior of the site. So that would address all of the Planning Commission comments. Staff is recommending approval and, and has made findings in support of the project being substantially conforming to the preliminary development plan. And again, your action today is to, staff is recommending that the commission approve the final development plans and ratifying the tentative map as revised based on what changes were discussed at September, your September 25th meeting. So I'll conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Great. I just want to, I see a person in the back of the audience. Were you here to speak on this topic? You're not here to speak. So there's no, there's no public here to speak on the topic. Okay, great. Let's take questions of staff at this point. Commissioner Hirschman.
So you stated that you're recommending approval based on it being in substantial compliance with the preliminary plan, but you didn't specify where, what your view of raising the elevation of those rear lots are?
Staff is in support of those revisions because it would bring the properties closer, well, it addresses a number of issues that this site has in terms of challenges for being developed. Because of the drainage issues associated with the site and the surrounding area, elevating the pads would allow the developer to, to convey the drainage issues through the site as opposed to working those around and through public streets. It would also create a sense of an edge along Bolardo Road as opposed to having homes that would be buried below Bolardo. And so for those reasons, staff was really, was in support of the changes.
But are you saying that's not a substantive, substantive change then?
Staff doesn't...
Substantive change, sorry.
No, staff didn't feel it was a change that would merit a complete, a complete revision to the project and new process through the PD.
Can you go back to that slide that shows the setback from the house to the property line? Okay, I think, not that one. Not that one. That one?
Those were the only ones that I had, that had setbacks.
Sorry, wait, wait. Okay, wait. There was one that called out, there was one with some identifying arrows that pointed to some lines on, yeah, okay, that one. I think, public trail, boulder. What is the line? It's kind of faint here, but there's a line that looks like it's about six feet off of those courtyards running through the bushes.
That's the perimeter property line.
Well...
So if you have, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it on the screen. Actually, I do have it further down in my presentation.
Yeah, I thought you did.
Yeah, the revised map is part of your attachments.
So the area to the right of that line is, is in the public domain, right?
Yes.
And, and so, and they're proposing to landscape in the public domain, is that right?
That's required, yes.
Okay. And the nine to 12 feet occurs between the pop-out and that, that very faint line, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And is it always 9.8 where the pop-out occurs and always 12 where it doesn't occur?
No. So what happens is there's a range of the depth of that, this, this perimeter buffer, it ranges from 9.8 to 12. There will always be a five-foot setback from the property line to the home, which would include that, that courtyard wall.
So from the property line to the bump out, the minimum on that whole stretch is 9.8, is that right?
Which property line?
Well, the property line of the project.
The perimeter property line, overall perimeter?
Yes, yes.
There's a, yeah, so it's a 9.8 to 12-foot setback between the perimeter property line and...
So it never gets smaller than 9.8?
No, correct.
Okay.
And the applicant has provided an exhibit that shows the overall landscape space that I just handed out to you. And it delineates it and, or highlights it, I should say, in a, in a green highlight that shows the overall landscape buffer is about 20 to 60 feet. There's a range of 20 feet at the smallest point to 60 feet at the widest point of proposed landscape.
From what to what?
From the back of the home to the Tocwitz Creek, Tocwitz Creek Trail.
Okay, but much of that is in the public right-of-way?
It's county flood control, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
So there's going to be doors in the back that open up and then they have to go through the landscaped area to get to the trail.
Correct.
So it's going to be landscaped and people are going to be walking through it.
Dumping through it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Song?
So on the rendering of comparison, View 1A to View 1B, it seems that there is a, I'll call it sort of a retaining wall in which the tubular metal fence has been erected over that, correct? Okay. So roughly, would you say that from the top of that retaining wall to the actual finished grade of the patio, would you say that it's about two feet, three feet in height?
Are you talking about the proposed?
Yeah.
So I think with the proposed funnel or the proposed grades, there would be limited, if any, retaining walls between, let's say, the Bolardo Road grade and the rear patio of the homes.
So they cannot build retaining walls, is that...?
No, they, they could, but I think they're, what they were trying to do is elevate it to be closer in line with the grade along the street.
Correct. And isn't the street higher than the house pad elevations?
Yes.
Right. So what is that roughly, what is that difference? Two feet, three feet?
It looks like, yeah, maybe the highest would probably be two or three feet at most where there's the most variation.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so...
Bolardo, you mean?
Bolardo.
Oh, I thought you meant the internal street, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Planner Newell, I do have a couple of questions, if I could. And I don't know if the applicant's better to answer this or you. But landscaping the flood control area needs a lot of approvals. I don't know if they're looking to put irrigation in there. I know it was a condition, you said it was a condition of approval. But I was looking through the conditions trying to find out if there was a maintenance condition. I didn't see it. I might have missed it. And I know we're looking at just at general conformance, but how is that going to be handled?
Let me see if I can find the condition.
And I could just be, just be missing it. The applicant may have it when we have the, I've given the applicant a chance to come up. If you don't have it right away, we can talk to the applicant about it.
Mr. Chair, just jumping in after confirming with Mr. Montalvo from Public Works, typically what would happen is there would be an encroachment agreement. And as part of that encroachment agreement, the applicant would be responsible for maintenance of the landscape materials.
Okay, okay, great, great. We've given the, I've given the applicant the opportunity to speak, if we can take that. The applicant wants to come up. How long do you think you're going to need? Oh, each little parts. Can I have you do it within 10 minutes? Okay, great.
Okay, well, thank you. My name is Ira Glasskey. I'm the principal of Far West Industries, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. First of all, congratulations to Chair Woods, Commissioner Gardner on your election. Both Brian and I are elected, pleasure should have elected officials in other jurisdictions, so we know what you've been through. So thank you for being here. I think I'd still be asleep. We appreciate the opportunity to work the last month with staff on addressing the concerns that the commissioners raised in the September meeting. And we think we've addressed all of them. We're going to each talk a little bit about them, but I just wanted to kind of give you a big picture of what we've done and why we've done it. A lot of the concerns were regarding the impact of views from Bolardo and the concern that the change in elevation that we're proposing is a significant difference from what was originally approved. And while the elevation is an average of five-feet difference, the impact really has already occurred on the previously approved plan. The previously approved plan from the elevation of Bolardo to the top of the home that was approved on the previously existing plan was 8.6 to 17 feet above the elevation of Bolardo. So as you're going down Bolardo, that view impact unfortunately has already occurred. So the difference on going up a couple feet, depending on which lot it is, does it really affect the views of the valley? Because they've already really been impacted by what was already conditionally improved. So we're not going from below the street level of Bolardo to above. We're already above the street level of Bolardo and it's just slightly additional impact. In return, we're actually getting quite a bit of difference in terms of drainability on the property, being able to go directly out to the Tocwitz Watch as opposed to going a significant distance through public right-of-way and streets, in addition to livability of those homes that back up and adjacent to Bolardo. We did want to be sensitive to your request for fencing. That was not just a block wall, and we agree with you after having looked at it. And so what we're proposing is actually, we would prefer to have the wrought iron wall. It'd be on top of a slight retaining wall, but then it will be all wrought iron. So that really does open up the view and the feeling from Bolardo. And actually, to be honest, it was a great suggestion because it actually is better for our homeowners as well. It actually helps open up their backyards as well. So that's what we're proposing. On the north side facing the creek, the, the reduction of the space there did occur because of the legal settlement that occurred before we owned the property and the removal of two paseos and adding of three sidewalks. But we did, in response to your directions, really look at kind of re-envisioning that space behind those houses. And he did show you that all we're really asking to, to occur behind there now is actually just a little five-foot patio that's off the kind of master bedroom. These homes actually really are aimed towards the center courtyard, the side courtyard, and that's where the homes and the livability area it is. And so we're asking for these little five-foot areas in back. Now with those five-foot areas, and this is what we were kind of talking about, Commissioner Hirschman, thank you very much, but from the property line to those five-foot little patios, that is, you know, the 9.8 to 12.2 of the impact. So it is very close to what we were trying to get to on the 12 feet. But understand that those patios only account for 40% of the total property line along the creek. And so 60% of that property line actually has five more feet because it goes all the way to the house. And so in those areas, you're really looking at 14.8 to 17.2 feet from the property line. Now, the property line is an imaginary line that no one will ever see once we build the community. What you do see is the trail. And that's what's between 20 and 60 feet from the trail, edge of the trail to the home. It's between 20 and 60 feet. That all will be landscaped. We are understanding, like we have in many other communities, we've done in Palm Springs, and it's been, this is our sixth over 20 years. we've done in Palm Springs, and it's been, this is our sixth over 20 years. We will be responsible for planting and maintaining it on an encroachment agreement. That's something that we'll actually put into our CCNRs and make it clear that that is responsibility of the homeowner association going on that point in the future. So from the community going along the Talkets Creek Trail, you really are between 20 and 60 feet away from the homes, which is a pretty significant landscape buffer. Most of the landscaping does have DG along it, so there is areas for homeowners to walk on the DG and not be traping through the plants. And we have our landscape architect will talk a little more about that. Couple of things, as we talked about, we added gates from each individual home to go out to the area. The other thing, the trail, the trail isn't level with the homes. The trail's actually four to seven feet below the elevation of the homes. And so there is actually a bit of a slope there, so it does kind of create more of a visual buffer between the trail and the homes. And as we discussed, we eliminated the two-story homes that have the massing at the back. The concern was the massing close to the trail. And so what we've done is we've gone back to the originally approved plan, which has the two-story homes have all the massing up front on the street and away from the common areas. So we appreciate, we think we've addressed, and working with staff, addressed all of your concerns. We have a couple more folks, Brian from Far West, and two representatives of our architect and engineer who will speak real briefly as well. So thank you.
Yeah, my name is Jarvis Payne, I'm a landscape architect with RGA Landscape Architects. And I just wanted to address the landscaping that's occurring off of the Talkets Creek. As was mentioned earlier, it varies anywhere from 20 feet to 60 feet, and it all will be landscaped in native vegetation that's from the Talkets Creek master plan. And there's going to be, we'll be bringing in boulders that'll be salvaged from the site along with DG, and it'll all be irrigated, controlled by a central irrigation controller. So it'll all be taken care of by the HOA. The one change we did make from the previous plant palette that, from the previous developer, is they included a native poplar tree and a native sycamore tree. And yes, those two trees are native, but where they occur naturally is way up in the canyons. They're always adjacent to year-round water and more shady, protected environments. If you tried to plant those trees in that condition there, they would require a lot more water, and chances are they would not survive the more intense afternoon sun and the wind that that site's going to get. But we did, we are bringing in the native California fan palm, which will do great in the sun and the wind in that location. But it's all going to be native per the Talkets Creek master plan plant list.
Before you move on to your next one, can I ask you a very quick question?
Sure.
Just, we got a handout that includes the green zone. The handout doesn't include the trailhead connection that was in our packet, is that, is the trailhead connection, the pedestrian connection from Palm Canyon to the trailhead still there?
Yes.
It's just missing from the map that we're getting?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's still there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's directly off the public sidewalk.
Great, great, thank you.
I'm going to skip our civil engineer, but he's here to answer questions if you have any specific to the plans and whatnot. I just wanted to kind of sum up where we are, and I'm the project manager, Brian Berksen, for Far West. This project's been through many iterations, many owners and developers. You know, Far West has a tradition of finishing what it starts, and we have built many communities out here, just to name a couple of our latest icon, Tuscany Heights, Murano, just to name a few. And, you know, we took the comments that you guys made at the last planning commission meeting to heart, and have incorporated those changes into what you see today. We believe that this is going to be a great project. We're looking forward to getting your approval so we can start to build. And just a couple of quick last things. One is on the package that you got today, this handout. The last couple of photos are additional site simulations we took as if you're standing on Bolardo looking into the project. One at the approved elevation, you can tell that is listed as four, location seven, number, view 4B. That's the approved one, you can see the fencing, the street goes down, it dips down, and the houses on the right-hand side are sunken. And then if you look at the page prior to that on view 4A, location seven as well, you see what it would look like, a normal, you know, normal type of community where the street is level with the rears of the houses. With all the things that we brought to you, I hope that you'll embrace this project and support it today, and we are here, of course, to answer any other additional questions you may have. And one last final thing is the wall. I know Mr. Newell was not quite sure, but we would propose that those be wrought iron along the Bolardo rather than breeze block. We think it gives, if you look at the simulation, number, location six, view 2C, that gives you an idea of what it would look like with the wrought iron if we left it with either breeze block or solid wall. The page prior to that, location five, view 2B, you can see that you're really missing out the views, which is, of course, what every homeowner wants to see, is the beautiful views of the mountains. So hopefully, we've done everything you've asked, and again, we're here to answer additional questions if you see so, thank you.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Song.
I'll just ask the questions, and then you guys can slap me on my hand and tell me. We already addressed that, okay. So number one, as far as the park design, you just took the liberty of showing us the rendering, but there has been no park design to date, right? Right at the corner.
For the dog park you're talking about?
For the dog park.
Yes, we've done the design for the dog park.
Okay, and so there are no changes to the dog park? Fence design?
Not from what was submitted previously.
Okay, on Bolardo. We're talking about the park on Bolardo?
Yeah.
Which is the dog park up at the front. The only change in terms of the wall design is that we would carry the wrought iron all the way across onto that side as well, so it's consistent in the entire Bolardo street view. So we'd have wrought iron over there, we would have some tighter slats down below, so that dogs couldn't squeeze between, but we would work that out.
Okay, so as part of this application is to consider that design on the dog park for the fence?
Yes.
Well, yeah, the fence was always metal picket, that was never.
Oh, wasn't that said as well?
No, that was, around the dog park, it's always been metal picket. We saw that dog park in that location also serving the public. It can serve the community, but also the public coming off the trail.
Okay.
So we wanted it to be very open and welcoming.
Okay. Then on Bolardo, there are lot number 53 and 55, and those setbacks are about five feet or eight and a half feet. Was that intentional, was that to create drama? Why are those lots, why are those homes so close to the right-of-way?
Brian Eichner with MSA Consulting, I represent the civil engineer. The minimum setback, I believe they were conditioning me, it was five feet. You can see on lot 55, where we're going into that knuckle, pushes the house farther back towards Bolardo, so we had to, as Brian mentioned, the livability area is more to the side in that central courtyard, so we were focused on maintaining that so that we didn't feel the five-foot setback in the back would have a detrimental effect to the home.
Okay, but the house, the elevations have gone up, so the buildings are perceived to be a lot closer on Bolardo when the setbacks are so narrow.
I, yes.
They hover over the right-of-way.
I, yeah, we're also pushed back because of the sidewalk. I mean, if there was more room to move it forward, we would. But we're kind of constrained because we have a sidewalk along the.
Where do you have, what sidewalk?
Interior street.
But you have 23 feet on the driveway apron and 17 and a half feet on your guest house.
Yeah, we also have.
How are you constrained?
There's a five-foot interior sidewalk that we were required to add when we take out the passeos. So if you look at the street, we have that sidewalk shown, and then we wanted to provide a setback from the sidewalk in addition to that so that the interior sidewalk wasn't going right by the home.
Okay. As far as the proposal of the wall design, for example, the length of the property on Bolardo, it's over 600 feet. Your design is that you'll have one type of fence material running beyond 600 feet?
Yes, we were proposing some minor deviations, and we weren't just going to do straight alignments, we're going to have some pop-outs as it goes along to create a little bit of a variation in it. But, yeah, the intention was to do just the wrought iron.
It's, is the pop-out through pilasters, or are you saying that there are?
No, it'll just be an offset in the wall, so the wall will jog about two feet in and out. I know it's hard to see at this scale. It's, yeah, over the fence.
Okay. And then also, when it comes to the opposite corner to the dog park, same situation. You, I think you show on your rendering, solid block wall on the right side. Your location seven, view 4B. 4B?
Sorry, I don't have that one on the PowerPoint.
Is that the one from the driveway? Oh, okay, yes.
So on the, on the south side of that driveway entrance, it shows, the rendering shows solid block wall.
And wrought iron.
And.
The intent was to have that side, since it's really the side of the house, to have that to be a block wall, but that's something that we can consider.
And then you'll transition to tubular fence along Bolardo?
That's correct. So as it gets to the end, which is basically the back of the property, as it turns left on the back of the property, it would transition to a tubular wrought iron.
Okay.
Yeah, both Bolardo and the Talkets Creek would be, along Bolardo and Talkets Creek would be metal picket.
Okay.
For the dog park.
Um. So let me just ask this question. Your buildings are articulated, why not adopt a similar design to your fence instead of having one proposed design material throughout the entire property?
We were attempting to be responsive to the concerns of the commissioners that talked about wanting to have view along that entire way. We're certainly willing to work with staff on providing some sort of articulation. Like I said, we like the idea because it actually does open up that whole corridor from both Bolardo as well as looking up from the homes.
I could definitely understand from Talkets Creek Trail side, because obviously the landscape and the views, but on Bolardo, you're trying to create a street frontage, you're trying to create a street view. And having, in my opinion, having that length with one type really just makes it into a cage. And your products are far above that. So I was surprised that you were simply sort of stamping one design for the entire perimeter.
We appreciate that. Once again, we were trying to be responsive and.
Yeah, let me add something from the last meeting that we were at. Originally, what we had talked about doing was doing, like, one house would be a breeze block and the next one wrought iron and so on, you'd switch back and forth. But after hearing comments at the last planning commission hearing, it was more advantageous, it seemed, that planning commissioners wanted to see all of it opened up, to have this wrought iron scenario. So, you know, that's why when Mr. Newell, at the beginning of his staff report, said, you know, "We are open to suggestions by planning commission to finalize what the material will be, we are okay putting in wrought iron, we are okay putting in breeze block or block wall, and we are okay putting in, you know, one lot has the wrought iron and the next lot has the block, and so on and so on, to give it a little different flavor." But, and we're open to doing any one of those things. Really looking for direction from the planning commission on how you want to see the board on that aspect.
And one last question, in between units, so you're my neighbor, okay? In between the units, what is the height of the block wall that you're proposing?
Those would be six foot. Six foot block.
And is that, in a standard, is that what you do?
Well, it's a standard because we are putting pools in every backyard for all the single-family residential.
The requirement is five feet?
I thought with a pool, it jumped up to six.
Oh, I'll have you a professional team figure, yeah, okay.
We will put in what's required, and if it turns out to be five feet, we can certainly modify our final plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So I'm just still curious about this back door to the trail. So I, I'm just assuming that you're probably going to make it spaced out enough so that there's kind of some natural paths to the, to the trail from the back. I just can't imagine having this beautiful landscaping and then people kind of messing it up because there's, but I'm assuming you're taking that into account?
Yeah, it's going to be a combination of, we're taking the native rock that's going to be salvaged from the site and arrange that in sort of natural configurations, but it's not going to be a solid wall, and then we'll have DG as the ground cover and massing of native plants, so it's, we both, we want it open somewhat so for views and permeability, so it doesn't appear as though there's a wall between the community and the trail.
Right, yeah, I'm just thinking, anybody walking along the trail, and then for the homeowners, just that it's all, makes sense. Okay, thanks.
Okay, this is a question, if you can just stay there, the architect, the landscape architect, just a minute, but I'm going to ask staff a question first. The east side, or, excuse me, the west side of Palm Canyon that this project is located on is, was not built out when we did the east side, is it? We, with the Toll Brothers project, we put in, they put in the public right-of-way and the center median and the trees and the lighting. We, I don't remember if we had done the west side of the street as well.
I don't believe it was part of that project.
Okay, so it'd be part of this project. I would just ask of staff, and I would think we'd put it in a condition, that that needs to be consistent with the west, including the lighting, which is the ring lighting on the trees that shine up on the palm trees and shine down, which is what we put on the east side of the street. Okay, and then I'm a little underwhelmed by the entrance. I think your other projects have greater entrances to them. I don't even know if those palm trees are lit or how they're lit.
Yeah, they'll be uplit.
They'll be uplit, and can you do the uplight and downlighting with the ring on it, both ways? Like, but we.
That was not our intention at the entrance, but if that's what you would like to see, we can do that.
Okay, it's just, your other projects have quite a different entrance than this one has. This one just has three palm trees in it and some shrubs, if I'm correct?
Yeah, it's a little bit more sort of modern, cleaner look than some of our other projects might be, given that it's a mid-century modern vent to the architecture, so we tried to keep it somewhat cleaner, less cluttered.
Okay.
And in regards to the streetscape along Palm Canyon, we did mimic the same sidewalk alignment and the way the sidewalk jogs around the trees to mimic exactly what was happening over at the Toll Brothers site, so they are matched.
And the same lighting as well.
And we can do the same lighting as well, too.
Yes, the lighting is pretty spectacular. It's the first time, I think, we've done the up and down, and it works really well in that dark area right there. Okay, great. Any other questions of the applicant or staff? Hearing that, I'll open it to commission discussion. Commissioner Hirschbein, Commissioner Hirschbein, excuse me.
Thank you. Yeah, I thank the applicant for looking at a lot of our concerns so seriously. I'm still of the opinion that the original pad elevations along the west side of the site need to prevail for me to be able to certify that this is in compliance with the original approval. And I'll tell you why. I think some of the renderings that you've produced are a bit disingenuous. I went out there today, I was kind of studying it, and it's true that even at the approved heights, there will be some blockage to the view down valley. I believe there'll be still some significant. I believe there'll be still some significant views out towards the South Ridge Mountains, Bob Hope House area, as well as some of the mountains further down towards Rancho Cathedral City and Rancho Mirage with the lower elevation that will have no hope of being seen with the proposed elevation change. I just don't agree that there's no impact to the change. The change does not provide substantial impact. I don't agree with that. In the bigger picture, it's true that between AAC, which I was on previous to planning commission, and planning commission, gosh, I've seen this project maybe a dozen times. I'm not really exaggerating. And unfortunately, every time we've seen it, we've gotten less attention paid to the public realm. And it's just been dumbed down and dummed down every time we've seen it. And I'm not willing to dumb it down anymore. We used to have a very lovely little plaza at the, at the bridge, where the bridge intersected Palm Canyon or the bridge intersected the corner of the project with a drinking fountain and a shaded bench area. That got removed. We had the Paseos, we know why that got removed. Now we're asking, now we're being asked to sacrifice an important view corridor. And for someone that lives on the south side, south end, who uses Bellardo quite a bit, I'm sensitive to that. Maybe some of the other commissioners don't drive that street quite as often as I do. And may not be as sensitive to that. But I, as proposed, I wouldn't be able to support it. As far as the drainage goes, you know, there's always a solution. I lived in a very hilly area in Los Angeles and my drainage, my sewer line was actually below the street. And I had to use a sump pump for my sewage. It worked for 20 years. I never had a problem. I moved out here. You know, there are options. You might, if it's truly an insurmountable drainage problem, you might have to reconfigure the houses. You might have to come up with a fourth housing type and you may not be able to squeeze a dozen houses on that row. You may only be able to squeeze six houses on that row. I don't know what the answer is, but frankly, it's not my problem. My problem is protecting the public's desire to have this view corridor maintained to the extent possible. And I, and I take that, I take that trust seriously. And I think it's something, I think it's something the commission should consider. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm, I'm underwhelmed by the site perimeter design and the impact that it is making on Bellardo. I think when the elevation was lower, it was a lesser impact onto the street. And so now that you're bringing the, your rendering one C is, it's very clear of how close the edge of the buildings are to the street. And it's not respectful. Instead, it's now the buildings are imposing. And if you're looking at the setbacks of five feet, it's just too cramped. And Bellardo is a very nice street and a nice gift to the community. So I'm underwhelmed by the, and I appreciate that you're saying, okay, planning commission, what design do you want? But in reality, you have a very qualified team to put a, a street design together that goes together with the, with your project and the company that you represent.
Commissioner Gardner, did you have any questions at this point or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I am concerned as well about the sight, sightlines over there. And Bellardo, I do drive by there a lot and understand what you mean by that. And as well as the, how close the homes are to the street. And honestly, hearing the comments of the other commissioners, I'm likely to agree with them. Just I respect your opinions and feel like this is your, this is your wheelhouse, so.
I agree with my fellow commissioners. However, I think that they have done everything they can in the direction that we have given them. I think what we can do is possibly look at it and providing some conditions or comments to it to have them come back. As an example, I personally don't know what a dwarf bottle brush looks like, but there's a lot of it as you go through this site. You know, it just seems to be a lot of little shrubs versus like, you know, kind of trees. But I think we can condition that. I agree with you about the undulation along Bellardo. I think we could just basically say something like provide a wall that's undulating, undulating, excuse me, along Bellardo. I think the dog park fencing too could use a little tweaking. I think you brought up that earlier, Commissioner Song. I think it could be something with a bit of solid along with a little wrought iron, along with a little bit of solid, especially since it's on such a slope right there. And it's going to look very funny with the smaller fencing for the dog being there. I do think that the, to the point of benches and whatnot at the trailhead, the tree, I think we can light that the same way. There's a palm tree there. It can be uplit and downlit. We can ask for some of the amenities back in on that. But I think that they've come back with the two stories facing Tacwitz being forward to the street. They put in some bulb outs, which I think is a great idea to keep from speeding. Bulb outs in the streets, little punchouts. Yeah, and I just think I'd like to see those a little more decorated than what we've seen so far. So they're not just a straight, yeah. I think that's great, especially with the sidewalks there. So I think I'm willing to offer a lot of conditions on it if my fellow commissioners are so inclined.
Well, I think I made my position clear. I'm not going to vote for this project if the pads are elevated to the proposed elevation.
So why don't I take a stab at a motion? Okay, and then we can, we can work from that motion. So my, my motion would be to approve the project and to add a series of conditions. Some of those I just talked about that I can repeat or we can add more, especially from our designer, like designer commissioners on, on commission. Is there a second to that?
Could I ask a question to staff?
Yeah, absolutely.
From these public works on the drainage, has this been a challenging situation in which this is the solution that this project will move forward?
I'd say yes. I'd say the drainage is not simply resolved with lift stations or sump pumps because it is an emergency type situation with drainage. So you can't really put mechanical operations. And trying to take a drainage across South Palm Canyon creates quite a significant challenge for the design team and for the developer. So from what they've done, my perspective, the raising of the pads to alleviate the drainage or to be able to route the drainage through the development out to the Tacwitz Creek is the way I would design and resolve the drainage situation for this project.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, and from planning, Dave, on the setbacks for the homes now that the pads are raised, could that be revised or conditioned to have those homes not to be any closer than 10 feet?
Going back to what was approved under the preliminary development plan, they had five-foot setbacks along that edge. So to increase that, you could request that if the applicant would be willing to accept that and see if that is something that they're amenable to. But the standard for the project is five feet for the rear.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Song, that was on the Bellardo frontage or on the trail frontage? Which were you asking?
On the Bellardo.
On Bellardo?
Yeah.
Back to the original plan. I'm looking at what we had approved back from the city council. There was a five-foot setback. You know, it varied though, but the standard that was approved was five feet. The area where you have Lot 55, which was referenced by the applicant, where the knuckle is in the street, that was one home that was closer to Bellardo Road. So there was, there were some conditions where homes were, had a greater setback than the five feet. But the minimum standard was five feet. Now, you know, the applicant has options to, or has the potential ability to increase that rear setback and buffer the homes from Bellardo further in some other locations. So that might be a way to address the street, the street view of the project and the buffer of the buildings from Bellardo Road.
Okay, thank you, David.
There's still a motion on the table. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, so the motion has been first and second. Now we're open for discussion on how. The motion is to approve the project, adding conditions to the project to try and capture some of the issues we've talked about as a commission. And we can go over those again if we want.
Mr. Chair, this is what I have in my notes. Number one was relative to the design of the fence along the Bellardo frontage. Your comment was relative to either undulating the fence or providing offsets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Secondly, was relative to the dog park fencing. You wanted to see revisions to the proposed fencing around the perimeter of the dog park. The third was relative to the palm trees and providing both uplights and downlights at the entry off of Bellardo Road. And then the fourth was relative to providing additional landscaping at the bulb outs on the interior streets. And then you had also mentioned earlier in your comments that you wanted to have a condition so that the west side of South Palm Canyon matches the east side of South Palm Canyon in terms of the palms trees and the streetscape.
That's correct. And the other one was on the trailhead, the Tacwitz Creek trailhead, is that that palm tree had both uplighting and downlighting to, just for security at night? And put in a, look to Commissioner Hirschbein, was there a bench there originally? Is that what it was? Just some furniture. They could be individual chairs or something, you know, just some sort of, individual chairs might be better. People can't sleep on them. But just something for somebody to have a rest if they're on the trail or coming off the trail. And then the last one I had was, and I'm sorry, I'm not a landscape architect, was the bottle brush trees on there? I'm not really clear what those look like, if they're actually just shrubs or the trees. Did you want to try and answer that for us? Thanks. And I'm sorry of my ignorance on the bottle brush.
No, no, no. In fact, this is a, it's a fairly new variety of tree. It's a, it's called bottle brush, but it's, they call it slim. It's a tree that only gets to be about five feet wide and 12, 15 feet tall. And it's really good in very tight situations like that. So you can provide landscaping in a narrow condition. It takes heat, wind, drought really well, and it flowers nearly year round. And it's evergreen with very little litter. And so we've been using that in our landscapes now in areas where we have really constrained planting beds.
Great, then I withdraw any concern. Thank you very much with that. Do we want to add other?
Yeah, the, the location of the buildings on Bellardo, that the setback should be. Minimum of 10 feet.
From the rear?
From the rear.
Right, and what will they do to the front property line then? Will they just push the building closer to the front?
That's, that's what they need to work out.
Okay.
Because there's really no front.
It could be a different housing type. It could potentially be a different housing type there then.
Yeah, or it could be reduced in width and somehow or.
Mr. Chair, the only caveat I would put on that is we want to make sure that we have at least an 18-foot deep driveway as that provides additional parking for the development.
And Commissioner Song, is that just for the two lots? Is that what we're talking about? Lots number 55 and 53? 53 looks like it's got a, 53 is an eight-foot.
Eight.
Eight-eight.
Yeah.
55 is the one that's lacking?
It's six feet.
It's six feet, okay. So just to be clear, are we?
Yeah, 55, I think 53 is okay. And then the, I think the project entrance needs to be better developed.
I would agree with that.
The circular entrance.
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing, hearing no more discussion, we have a first, we have a second. Let's call for the, call for the question. So I need an interpretation.
Well, what the commission could do at this point is entertain an alternative motion, which might be to deny the substantial conformance finding. If there's no action there, then you could alter, you know, entertain a third motion and continue the discussion here. If there is no ultimate action by the commission one way or the other, I would recommend that perhaps there be a denial. One of the commissioners who may be in favor of the project may want to just deny it. So you've got that vote. And then it could be appealed to the council if the applicant would like to do that. That would be a way of breaking the deadlock if we do have a deadlock.
Can you repeat the last part again, Jim?
I'm sorry. Right now, I would suggest, you know, entertain an alternate motion, maybe to deny the substantial conformance finding if we end up with a two-two on that. Another alternative would be like a third motion. If that doesn't work, then my suggestion would be entertain the denial and have a commissioner who would have otherwise voted in favor just deny it. So we've broken the deadlock. We have commission action. It can be appealed to council and it's not stuck in limbo.
Got it, got it. Okay, so we have some options before us. I, I'm willing to condition it. I really do think that the, I'm sorry, was there another?
Mr. Newell just pointed out, another option that the commission does have is you could continue this item for one more meeting when we have more commissioners. That is another option. Yeah, maybe a while, yeah. Okay.
Could I put a note? And I know I have future planning commissioners here. City council members here. Okay, so it makes it clear if the majority of us, it makes it clear if the, it's for a denial and then it goes to city council to consider this project.
On appeal, they would have to appeal.
Correct. My sense is that we, because of our profession and because of being planning commissioners, we have a, this is what we do. This is what we focus on. Planning commission, I mean, city council members have a lot of other things that they have to take care of. So I'm making a plea in order for us to at least have those conditions in which the applicant will have to address them, that we would raise the issue again. applicant will have to address them, that we would raise the issue again and then revote, or the alternative is to have a city council decide on this project aesthetically, planning, like that.
Commissioner Hirschman.
So is one of the options to table it until the next planning commission meeting?
That is an option, I think, as Flynn mentioned. The question, I think, is going to be, who will be on the commission to hear it? I'm trying to remember what the, what the timing would be of council appointment of a new commissioner. Would that be next month or January?
While we are hoping, there is no guarantee that we will have new planning commissioners appointed for your next meeting in December. So have the interviews been scheduled and applications received? They have not confirmed that to me.
There's, it's in the process of being scheduled.
And your understanding is the new members will be on the panel for the next meeting?
That's, that's what is, that's what they're hoping can be done. At least, it's what's been conveyed to me, is to coordinate in order to make that happen.
Is that your understanding?
My understanding is they have positions to fill for this commission to keep moving, going as quick as they can.
Yeah.
The question really was, is will the new council appoint those members, and can they do that in time for the, I think it's December 11th is the next planning commission meeting?
Correct.
Is what they're working on. I just would like to, unless Commissioner Hirschman wanted to say something more?
Well, I certainly think that's an option, to table it until the next planning commission meeting.
If we table it, I would want to give direction, if we wanted any changes. I don't see that the drainage issue and the lot elevations is going to change.
Well, that's your opinion.
No, no, right, that is my opinion. That's why I'm stating it. I don't think that that is personally going to change at this point. I think we've heard from our city engineer, and we've heard from the applicant, and I think it becomes cost prohibitive if it may be technologically available, but there may be some long-term repercussions to it. So I would not deny the project based on the pad elevations at this point. I'd find it substantial conformance.
We know that. We know, we know how you feel. I'm just saying, one of the options is to table it until the next meeting, because we'll have a new cap, we'll have a new commission.
True, that is an option. We could do that, or we could try another vote and just see what happens.
Personally, I'm interested in seeing what some new people on the commission would think about this. Obviously, I have the least amount of architectural experience, so that's part of why I feel very conflicted about all of this, because I do respect all of your opinions on it. So I would be interested to hear what others who would be on the commission would have to say. And I do agree with Maria that I think that this would be better decided by the planning commission rather than pushing it to city council. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
So are you recommending tabling it till the next meeting?
Yeah, I would, I'm with you, as far as recommending tabling it at this point.
Mr. Chair, if I might just offer a comment. If we table this for a new planning commission to consider, we potentially put the applicant in a never-ending loop of coming back and trying to address new issues with each new body. And so I would caution against that.
Okay, let's make a motion. Obviously, we can't repeat the same motion as, I'm sorry, we can't make the same motion. We have to change the motion, right? Because the motion to approve the project with conditions has been in a draw.
Yeah. You could make the same motion again, but it will be the same result. I would suggest a different motion.
Okay, so the motion is to deny the project. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, I'm taking over.
So you want to make a motion to deny the project?
Right, just to get this moving.
Right. And is there a second? It's already, the motion's already been logged. Thank you. Is there a second for that?
The findings for that, we just would, it would be good to have those on the record if we could. The findings for denial.
Right.
Okay, finding the denials are one, within the context of street, Flynn, I feel like you can say it better.
Your finding needs to be relative to its conformance to the preliminary plan development rather than view corridors or other items that may have been discussed.
So the pad elevations have changed, and therefore the architectural integrity of the project has changed drastically?
Okay, is that enough for findings? Do we need to make additional findings? Okay, so we have a motion to basically deny the project and to change the findings on why we're denying it. Let me ask a question. We don't have a second on that yet. If it were to be a split vote again, does that automatically mean that they cannot appeal it to city council?
I can take a look at that really quick. My understanding is generally you need final action so that it can be appealed.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember if there was something in your code that says no action can still be appealed.
Well, I believe after a second tie vote, that is tantamount to denial of the project, and so consequently, that could be appealed.
Okay. So with that in mind, do you want to rethink your motion or try and get a second for that motion?
Let's get a second on that motion.
Okay, is there a second for the motion to deny the project?
Then there's no motion.
There's no motion. So let me do this. Let me, and I apologize, this is the first time we have been in this situation as a commission up here. I think there's validity in something that everyone's said up here thus far, but I will make one other motion to, again, approve the project with conditions as we've listed before, and have the staff work with the applicant, this is where I'm changing it, work with the applicant on the conditions that we are proposing. And with that, is there a second? Okay, can we, great. Okay, is there a discussion on that motion? Commissioner Gardner?
So, I mean, one thing, when you look at the timeline of all of this, you know, I wasn't here for when it was originally approved. So is the, has the elevation changed drastically since we first approved it?
Five feet.
Five feet? Okay.
One of the things that we have as a planning commission, even as AAC, is to, is major conformance, and I think there are extenuating circumstances here for that five feet, personally. I think also the applicant has made a good faith effort, along with, our staff has made a good faith effort to bring this back to us. And I think drawing out the development process on something that can bring benefit to the city with the few conditions that we're adding to it is a benefit to the city as a whole. Because this site has been vacant for a very long time, and it has a lot of challenges to it, the site, so that's why I made the motion.
I think one of the discussion points that we didn't touch is that the applicant also could consider that the homes on that, along that area, the height could be reconsidered, so that if the building height also comes down, then there's a hybrid sort of solution. You have to bring the pad elevation up, but you can bring the building height elevation down.
Along Bolardo, you're talking about Bolardo.
Along Bolardo, that's a comment.
Okay, so is that something you want to entertain as an amendment?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I'm going to just break protocol a minute and see if that would be acceptable to the applicant.
Coming up with an entirely new housing product is challenging on that. We can, we were just working with our numbers, with the civil engineer, we can do the 10-foot, so we believe we can push everything forward, and those homes already have the massing to the front in terms of the second story. So we would ask the commission to consider going with the condition of requiring the 10 feet, remove the houses forward. We think there's ability to do that while still meeting the requirements on driveways. So we would ask for that to be the condition.
Okay, I think the question, though, was, can you reduce the height of some of the product, the prototypes along Bolardo?
Yeah, it's challenging, because it is a two-story house. It's beautiful views on that direction. We've already moved the massing to the front, so the massing's away from Bolardo. It becomes very, very challenging to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Is there more discussion on that motion? Work with staff on the conditions that we, we...
First motion didn't ask us, didn't ask the applicant to work with staff?
No, it didn't say to work with staff on it.
So that's the only change?
That's the change, yeah. Okay, hearing nothing, let's take a vote. Thank you for dealing with this. There are a series of conditions. I hope you take what we had said, I think you took seriously the first time. You'll work with staff very closely on that, and thank you for doing business here. I'm sorry it's taken a while to get through it. All right, the next part is planning commission reports, requests, and comments.
So the big elephant in the room is, we're going to dearly miss Commissioner Wood and Gardner. We're really happy of how things have gone, but at the same time, it's going to be a huge loss. And Flynn, I don't know how you have the heart to go through the circle of changes, but I look at you for motivation and inspiration.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank my fellow commissioners who are leaving us, better pastors, I guess. You'll be great on council, both of you, I think. The city has a lot to be proud of and to look forward to, your wise counsel. Thank you. I will say, I have it easy, because I will continue to work with them, just at a different meeting.
I want to congratulate Commissioner Gardner on your election. Congratulations. I think it's a, it's a great win for the city and for you personally. I want to say that serving on the planning commission has been nothing shy of an honor, and I have, think in all my years of working with various planning commissioners and various city councils, never found a body with such diverse opinions but yet worked together, and that's really a testament to everyone's maturity in their opinions. And I really appreciate having worked here with each one of you through the thing, and I'm very thrilled to have served as chair. It's been an educational experience unto itself. And lastly, I really want to acknowledge the dedication of staff to this commission and to the city in general. I know that Planner Newell came without any fanfare to principal planner. Congratulations, for those on the commission that didn't know that, which I think is a fantastic testament, too, to our internal talent. So with that, I'll close my comments.
Yeah, I thank you very much. All of this happened very quickly. I didn't even think that the council would put me on planning commission, so all of this has been kind of a surprise, but I appreciate everyone's support in helping me and guiding me and through all of it. And I do hope that I did add some value and a different perspective at times to some of the issues, but I appreciate Flynn always answering my questions as well. And hopefully, you'll get someone else that also has somewhat of a similar background in the sense of just seeing things from the perspective of someone who isn't steeped in architecture or planning, just because I do think that it can be helpful to kind of hear from someone else sometimes, especially when it comes to signs in our district. So thank you, and congratulations to Dennis as well, and I look forward to serving with you again.
Thanks. We'll probably be sitting next to each other.
I think so.
Planning directors report.
I've got a number of items for you. First of all, Ms. Hints provided you with a calendar for 2020 with planning commission, architectural advisory committee, and city council meetings, valuable to those who are departing to city council. You still get to see your city council meeting dates. Planning commissioners, if you will, please look at those dates and just let us know if there are any issues with those. Also, this gives you the opportunity to schedule your vacations. You'll notice that we are dark in August, so please make sure you take time off and enjoy. Secondly, we are tentatively planning a joint architectural advisory committee and planning commission meeting in December. I am going to propose to do that on December the 11th, so that it will be on the same day as our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. What we will probably do is start that at noon on December the 11th with the AAC, and then continue with our regular planning commission meeting starting at 1:30. The agenda is going to be the Orchid Tree. They were recently at city council discussing an amendment to their operations covenant and an expanded site plan to incorporate the three additional properties to the north.
And why would it be a joint meeting instead of regular process?
At the direction of the city council. They've requested that we look at that together. And then the most important item that I need to discuss with you is our joint architectural advisory committee and planning commission holiday party that we have every year. We are tentatively looking at the date of December the 5th, Thursday, December the 5th, and hope that that does not conflict with any other social plans you might have that evening.
When would it be?
Excuse me?
When, what time would it be?
It, we typically start about 6:30.
Just to let you know, it would preclude any council member from coming.
Oh, really? Oh, darn it, you're right.
Yes.
I forgot about that. It will preclude me from coming as well.
Right.
Okay, let's see, and I can't, I can't...
So December 5th is a special city council meeting that will be held at the convention center related to the arena.
And actually, I think it would be great if there were planning commissioners at that meeting.
Yes.
So I will try for December the 6th instead. We do have the tree lighting at 4:30 on December the 6th, but if we hold our joint holiday party at 6:30, I don't think we'll conflict with that. And we would also invite our new council members to attend that event as well. I'll be sending out invitations and confirming the date with you.
Great.
And that's it.
Did you want to give just a very quick update on the Tova, Tovar, Tovar, as well as the Dream Hotel?
Yes, I will give you a very brief update. Tova is the one just on North Palm Canyon, immediately north of Vista Chino, the one that Commissioner Vice Chair Maruzzi brings up. The applicant has emailed us this week indicating that they are close to closing the deal with Marriott as their operator, which means they can then proceed with submitting their construction documents and moving ahead with construction. There are issues with maintenance of the fence, which they are aware of and will be taken care of shortly, in addition to other things that Vice Chair Maruzzi has mentioned to our city attorney. On the Dream Hotel, unfortunately, the news I have on that one is not good. The developer of that project is in litigation with the contractor who completed the underground construction for the parking structure on the hotel, and so they will not be able to move forward with the above-ground construction or finalizing their construction documents for the above-ground construction until that litigation is resolved. Consequently, that means that they will need to amend their operations agreement that they have with the city council. So those of you who are future city council members, you may see that at an upcoming meeting. So that's where we are on those two projects.
Great, thank you. Hearing nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? And it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.